Okay, Jamie, are we ready?
We're almost there.
Okay.
I think we're on.
Say that again.
I, I think this, it says live on YouTube at the top. I think we're good.
Okay, we're gonna start, okay. Okay, good morning, the House, please come to order. In accordance with Article Three, Section Seven, Wyoming Constitution, House of Representatives of the Sixty-Fifth Wyoming Legislature is convened in special session at the hour of eight AM, the fifteenth of May, two thousand and twenty, at the written request of His Excellency, the Governor of the State of Wyoming, Mark Gordon. And, and members and members of the public, normally now we'd all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance together, it's, it's, it's impossible to have all these voices going at the same time, so our pledge today will be led by Representative Jim Blackburn. Representative Blackburn is a United States Navy veteran, served from nineteen sixty to nineteen sixty-four. And so if you could all please rise and join him in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you could remain standing, thank you Representative Blackburn. And I've asked Representative Lloyd Larson, Representative from Fremont County, to give the invocation to open this special session, Representative Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Our Father in Heaven, as we come before thee this day, we're thankful, be citizens of this great state, to have the opportunity to serve in this legislative capacity. We've witnessed and are witnessing the detrimental impacts of this pandemic and what it is doing to our state, his citizens and businesses. And we ask in all humility for thy divine intervention to help turn the tide of these impacts and to give us direction on the decisions we need to make for the future of the state. We ask a blessing on those individuals and families who have been infected with this virus. Please bless them with health, that they may soon cover full, uh, fully recover. And we ask a blessing of peace and calm on those who've lost family members and friends to this virus, please comfort them. Father in Heaven, we're grateful for Governor Gordon and his leadership during these historic times. And we are grateful to our Department of Health, public health officials, our state health officer and county health teams, as they have wrestled with the unprecedented decisions required of them, and ask that thou would continue to bless them with the health and endurance required at this time. Now, we recognize the significance of being called into this special session. And we ask that as we deliberate in these proceedings, that thy Spirit might attend and inspire us to make appropriate decisions and to bless us with the vision to understand the impacts these decisions will have on the citizens of the state. We're grateful for the technology that allows us to meet appropriately and for our staff who understands this technology and have made this meeting possible. We're grateful for our House leaders and the enormous amount of time they put in preparing for today and tomorrow. And we ask that thou would bless them with clarity of mind and direction as they guide us through this legislative session over the next two days. Please bless us to work collaboratively, collaboratively as colleagues and to respect this great process and to respect each other. And finally, Father in Heaven, please bless our military men and women wherever they may be. Please protect them and their families. Bless them with courage, endurance, and love for their fellow men. And we humbly ask for these things, in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Please be seated. Okay, Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Convening roll call for the first day of special session, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Barlow.
Here.
Blackburn.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Brown.
There.
Burkhardt.
Here.
Burlingame.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Clem.
Here.
Clifford. Clifford. Connolly.
Here.
Crank.
Here.
Dayton Selman.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
Eckland.
Here.
Air.
Here.
Flitner.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Furphy.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Creer.
Here.
Haley.
Here.
Hallinan.
Here.
Henderson.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Jennings.
Here.
Kenner.
Here.
Kirkbright.
Here.
Larson Lloyd.
Here.
Larson Dan. Larson Dan.
Here.
Lindholm.
Here.
Laux.
Here.
McGuire.
Present.
Miller.
Here.
Newsome.
Here.
Nicholas.
Here.
Northrop.
Here.
Obermuller.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Paxton.
Here.
Pelkey.
Here.
Peperina.
Here.
Ponell.
Here.
Roscoe.
Here.
Salazar. Schwartz.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Summers.
Here.
Stiff.
Here.
Stivar. Stivar. Sweeney.
Here.
Task.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Washett.
Here.
Western.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Winter. Winter. Yen.
Here.
Swannitzer.
Here.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker. Clifford.
Here.
Stivar.
Stivar is present.
Winter.
Winter is present.
Mr. Speaker.
He was kicked off, he's also present.
We have sixty present.
We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and just pause real quick, folks, until the speaker is allowed back into the Zoom call. Okay.
Tyler, can you see us streaming on YouTube? Cause I can see the Senate, but not the House.
I haven't looked for it yet, um, but I'm, I'm looking for it also, if you find the link.
I got it, Sarah.
If any of LSO staff are listening, could you come into the House chamber to assist the speaker?
I'll put a message out.
Thank you. And so for those folks listening online, we're just pausing for a second until this gets figured out.
Sarah, I think I'm seeing the same thing you're talking about. I'm seeing only the Senate on YouTube, not the House. Is there a different link? Am I missing you?
Yeah, there is a different link, but chat is disabled, so I can't send it to you. I'll, I'll send it to you in your email.
Please include me on that, Sarah.
For everybody present, if you're in the, if you see the live on YouTube, there's a little down arrow, it'll let you copy the streaming.
That's super handy, thanks Mike.
You can view it there, but I am having troubles on another computer or my iPad on YouTube actually locating the live stream, just so everybody's aware. So yeah, using that YouTube little dropdown, you can find it there if you're interested in having two things going at once, but um, on the YouTube, the Senate is up, and I think it takes about ten minutes for it to come live on the YouTube Legislative Channel.
The House stream is actually on a different channel, it's under Wyoming Legislature One, which is not the main Wyoming Legislature YouTube channel, and that's why it's not showing up on the main channel's list of videos.
Tyler and/or anybody else, um, I'm getting some notices from the public that they're not able to find it online, so if we can find a link to maybe share with the public somewhere, cause I've got four text messages so far that they're not able to see the House, but the Senate is live streaming. Okay, no, that's a really good point. What I'll, well, what I'll do is I'll grab ahold of LSO IT staff here and have them post that also, once they're done dealing with the speakers issues.
You know, Tyler, uh, this is Mike. I, uh, I just clicked, I'm not very savvy with all this technology. I just clicked on the link on our screen, pulls up the YouTube video streaming us.
Yeah, it's just, the, the problem is that, that link is only going to, that's available on the LSO's website, is only going to the Senate's right now, it's not going to the House option. Um, so we need to make sure that, cause it's two separate streams, so we need to make sure that the public has access also.
Probably a good idea.
I just went to YouTube on my other computer and I could get both the House and the Senate. If I can do it, sheesh.
Mike, you into the rescue? Can't, can't you hack in from the backside?
I think the answer, Pat, is yes.
Either the Chief Clerk or Representative Chairman Swannitzer, can you admit the speaker in, please?
Done, and I would remind you all to please use titles as we continue, cause we are in session.
Okay, I think I'm back.
You are.
Yeah, sorry about that, I, uh, that probably won't be the last time. That's the first time, though. I'm gonna rename like we're apologize to folks out there. Yeah, I got the Representative Laux on the roll call, and just all disappeared, so. Okay, I'm just getting my just, uh, kinda revamped here a little bit. Okay, that's the worst thing that happens today, we're gonna be all right, so. Okay, everybody back with us now? Okay, now, Chief, Chief Clerk has called the roll, and I have one hand, uh, I don't, and so members, I'll just remind you to be recognized, we'll, we'll raise that hand, but we're now gonna continue down our order of business, so Chief Clerk has taken the roll, and I direct the Chief Clerk to notify His Excellency, the Governor, that the twenty twenty special session of the House of Representatives, Sixty-Fifth Wyoming State Legislature is organized and ready to receive any communication he may desire to submit. And also ask that our Chief Clerk notify the Senate that the two thousand and twenty special session of the House of Representatives, Sixty-Fifth Wyoming State Legislature is organized and ready to receive any communication they may desire to submit. Now, members, uh, the Constitution requires that the Governor address the Legislature in the opening of the session, and the Governor has graciously submitted a letter. Uh, Chief Clerk is also the reading clerk and the Assistant Chief Clerk for this session, and the Chief Clerk, can you please read the Governor's letter, and we appreciate his communication to us?
Governor's message to the Legislature for the May two thousand and twenty special session. In the months preceding your last budget session, a virus emerged in China that posted a dual threat. First, a health threat, because it was a new, highly contagious and insidious pathogen entering a virgin population, it spread quickly throughout the globe. There are, there were very few treatment options, and those infected with it experienced an increased risk of mortality depending on circumstance. Then there was the economic threat, with its own attendant health considerations, brought on by how countries around the world responded through shutting down economic activity and restricting people's behaviors and travel. Although the initial results of these often stringent health-related shutdowns seem to demonstrate some ability to slow critical infection rates and ease the demand on healthcare systems, the result, result impacts to the global economy have been devastating. Within a month of an all-time high in the stock market, the market crashed, exasperated in part by a coincident price war between two of the world's largest oil producers intent on driving a stake into the heart of our domestic oil industry. The world's economic, economy shrank, US GDP has plummeted, and the issues that we focused on in this year's budget session, including declining, declining coal sales and bottomed-out natural gas prices, have only grown worse. There, these are the revenues Wyoming depends upon to fund education and government. In early March, Wyoming confirmed its first case of COVID-19, just days after the session closed. Wyoming began to implement a series of meas, measures that were intended to safeguard citizens' health and to preserve precarious, precarious healthcare capacities. This was done out of an abundance of caution at a time when some other states were experiencing an exponential growth in cases, corresponding deaths, and a mushrooming demand for medical care related to COVID-19. The disease has now spread to two hundred thirteen countries and territories around the world. Wyoming's efforts never rose to the level, level of other states, but have largely been successful. So far, we have seen just seven deaths in Wyoming, the lowest in the country. Nevertheless, these measures have burdened our economy, affecting in many instances our smallest, most fragile and local businesses, unfortunately. While we are lifting some of these measures today, ahead of many of our peer states, we must still recognize damage has been done. Worse perhaps is the fact that simply lifting Wyoming orders will not miraculously bring back demand for the commodities Wyoming produces from agriculture to minerals to energy or even tourism. All of these industries depend on robust consumption beyond the borders of Wyoming, and consumption will take time to, sometime to recover. Our core manufacturing, agriculture, and resource extraction industries, even while they may, even while they never shut down, were, are diminished today as a result of the demands destructed, destruction that has attended the world's economic shutdown. Unemployment has risen drastically in recent weeks, perhaps not as much in Wyoming as elsewhere, but significantly enough to cause unprecedented hardship for both our citizens and our small businesses. Tourism, our largest employer and the second largest source of income to the state, has been crippled because no one is traveling, either out of fear of catching COVID or from travel restrictions imposed elsewhere. Our healthcare systems have responded well, but are not yet out of the woods, and our counties and towns face potentially devastating losses of revenue. We have schools that need to prepare for the fall. Families that depend on food from their local pantries need help to do, as do landlords, tenants, and others who depend on normal cash flow to repay their debts. It all happened so suddenly and unexpectedly. Folks are hurting and apprehensive about the future. Congress recognized the cataclysmic nature of this crisis for our country and responded massively with perhaps one of the largest, yet most incoherent age packages of all time, the so-called CARES Act. Although the monies coming to Wyoming are prodigious of the needs of our state and her people are extensive, the strictures of the bill are complicated, and the resulting scrutiny on how those funds will be expended will no doubt be excruciating. The audits will be extensive, and the penalties for misuse severe, particularly because Wyoming is the beneficiary of by far the largest per capita share of Congress's largest. CARES Act funds are federal funds that can be directed to existing state programs by the executive branch to meet Congress's intent as needed. And yet Wyoming's needs are varied, and this Governor believes responsibilities associated with the use of those funds should be shared with and informed by the Wyoming's Legislature. These are extraordinary times which call for extraordinary cooperation between the branches of government. Therefore, as stated in Article Three, Section Seven of the Wyoming Constitution, as Governor, I am authorized to call a special session in the case of a grave emergency in the affairs of the state. My friends, Wyoming finds itself faced with such a grave emergency in the affairs of the state. I have called this special session to ask your assistance in appropriating these federal funds provided to Wyoming through the coronavirus aid relief and economic security CARES Act. I am grateful for your willingness to help guide our state in this endeavor. I, I am looking forward to working with you as we establish programs that will meet the needs of the people of Wyoming. We must meet those needs expediently. We must be thoughtful and attentive in our use of these funds, and we must remain focused on our goal of providing budgetary flexibility because some needs have not yet revealed themselves. We are here to work together to help our citizens, businesses, and local governments recover from the economic devastation brought on by the COVID-19 pandemic and how the world has reacted to it. I thank you for your service, be safe, God bless you, God bless Wyoming, and God bless the United States of America. Mark Gordon, Governor.
Okay, thank you, Chief Clerk, and thank you Governor for your address today, and I, members, I, and members of the public, I think we've had a little technical glitch with the YouTube channel on the House side, I think initially we didn't have it linked correctly, and you could, members of the public could see the Senate, but couldn't see the House. And so if you're, that now has been corrected, and so, and that is recorded, so folks wanna go back and take a look, but really we've just come to order, we did the Pledge of Allegiance and the, uh, the opening prayer, and, uh, and now I've just read, uh, the Governor's message to us. So, so again, thank you, and, and we apologize for that little glitch. Okay, the next item is, Chief Clerk, I'd ask you to read the proclamation from the Governor, as the Governor called us into this special session, so we have one more letter from the Governor, Chief Clerk.
Governor proclamation. Whereas COVID-19 was first detected in Wuhan, China in two thousand and nineteen, and since then has spread to over sixty countries, including the United States. There are four hundred seventy-nine confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Wyoming as of May sixth, two thousand and twenty, as well as the presence of community spread. It is certain that many more cases will be diagnosed. There have been seven deaths in Wyoming related to COVID-19, and whereas on March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, Governor Mark Gordon declared a state of emergency and public health emergency in the state of Wyoming, stating that on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty, an individual within the state of Wyoming tested presumptive positive for COVID-19, and the state of Wyoming is experiencing a public health emergency in response to the evolving COVID-19 outbreak. And whereas Article Three, Section Seven of the Wyoming Constitution authorizes the Governor of the state of Wyoming to convene the Wyoming Legislature in a special session in the case of grave emergency in the affairs of the state. Now, therefore, I, Mark Gordon, Governor of the state of Wyoming, by the authority invested in me, by the, by the Wyoming Constitution, due by this proclamation called the Sixty-Fifth Legislature of the state of Wyoming into a first special session to be conducted electronically with the anchor location at the Wyoming State Capitol in Cheyenne, Wyoming on the fifteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty, at eight AM to consider, one, appropriating the federal funds available from the United States government to assist states, political subdivisions, and impacted businesses and individuals in addressing issues raised by the COVID-19 emergency, and issues caused by steps taken to abate the emergency. Two, amending and creating programs to be administered by the state for the purpose of helping businesses and residents impacted by COVID-19, by the COVID-19 emergency. Three, providing assistance to certain Wyoming businesses and residents negatively, negatively affected by the COVID-19 emergency. And four, providing state budgetary flexibility, retention and transfer of funds to prepare state and local governments for the public health emergency and resulting economic devastation. In witness where to, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the state of Wyoming to be affixed the seventh day of May, two thousand and twenty, the Honorable Mark Gordon, thirty-third Governor of the state of Wyoming.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Members, I just, um, couple things, I think, appreciate the, the message from the Governor, appreciate the, uh, the work of all the members of the Legislature, and, and really appreciative of the people who have given us such feedback and suggestions and those kind of things, and appreciate, uh, everyone taking, you know, taking a part and, and joining us and, and this morning, so, you know, I'm sitting here in the House chamber, and, um, when we were last here, I think it was on Thursday evening, uh, March twelfth. We finished late in the evening that day, we waited for the business to get finished up, we concluded by singing God Bless America. Then we adjourned on that Thursday evening. Uh, at that night, I think we had twenty-one drilling rigs working in the state of Wyoming. We, we got up that morning, packed our, our belongings, and when we headed home, go back to our real life, and then the world started changing that weekend. The school closures came, uh, the health orders were instituted, and we saw, of course, as the Governor mentioned, the, the beginning of the Saudi-Russian price war, which has just crushed our oil industry and sent the price into negative territory for the first time in our history. Uh, today, on this morning, now, we've got four drilling rigs working in our state. And it's anticipated that we'll have zero on June first. Be the first time in our state's history since eighteen ninety that we haven't had a drilling rig. Today, nineteen thousand six hundred Wyoming citizens are receiving unemployment, up from thirty-nine hundred when we left on March twelfth. So I don't think any of us, none of us, could have predicted these events, and, and I think now, though, the key is how we respond, how we get back up. And how we respond will make all the difference and really determine our outcome. And, uh, and just really so appreciative of the people of Wyoming who have stepped up and are making a difference. Uh, we've all seen in our communities, uh, the acts of charity, uh, service, been really incredible. And, uh, so again, on behalf of the Wyoming House of Representatives, just wanna express how proud I am. just want to express how proud I am of our state and our people. So as we gather here today, really, we're focused on first things first. And that's really providing relief to our businesses and our workers, our local governments and healthcare providers and renters and landlords. This 1.25 billion, which is, you know, just part of, well under half really of what the federal government has already provided to the state through loans and through checks and those kind of things to our families and individuals and businesses. It's a lot of money, but the need is also really great. And so we're going to see that across our country as well. So just close today really by telling people out there who are watching that you're going to hear us debate and talk and talk about the process and how we work our way through this. We've already had a couple hiccups this morning, but there's going to be some mistakes made. There's going to be times we're going to have to stop and pause. And we're going to keep learning as we go through this. Process certainly is not perfect. But outside the House chamber, the East Banister is turned upside down intentionally. Hundreds of them in this Capitol that was constructed by Amish carpenters. And it's upside down intentionally to remind us that only God's perfect. And so we appreciate, even in this imperfect process, it's a much better process than having the executive branch be the sole decision maker without the input from the public. And I know the 90 of us legislators have received dozens of emails and phone calls every day. And you multiply that across our great state, gotten a lot of input and we'll continue to work on those things. And again, I want to commend the governor and his staff. They've been exceptional in their efforts to work together for the good of Wyoming. But there is certain things that only the legislature in our constitution can do. And that's why we're here today to roll our sleeves up and go to work for Wyoming. So again, just a reminder, as we debate and you'll wonder maybe what, why are they spending so much time on this rule or that amendment and so on? I think be assured that none of us have lost sight of why we're here. You know, the last nine weeks have immeasurably changed our world and really every life in Wyoming. The dreams and plans and the life's work of people across our state are teetering on edge. And so as we debate and we talk about things as we work through this process, rest assured, we're here with humble hearts and we're filled with empathy for our people. And that we just really ask that everybody show some patience and grant each other some grace and keep our precious state in your daily prayers. And so with that, our next order of business, members, we're at, is the amending and adopting of rules. I would like to recognize Mr. Majority Floor Leader Barlow.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. I move to amend the permanent and joint rules of the House of Representatives for the 65th Wyoming Legislature by adding Joint Rule 23-1 Special Session Rules. Mr. Speaker?
Okay, thank you. And members, this motion on the rules, of course, is debatable and amendable. And so you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded, I think, Representative Summers. Okay, I would recognize Majority Floor Leader. And I've asked him and Chairman Greer, members of Management Council, to if you two could go ahead and walk through the rules for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The Majority Floor Leader has asked me to maybe lead this off and then I think he will take us through a more technical look of this. You know, we look at, there's an English blessing. This is may you live in interesting times. But upon further investigation, you find that that English blessing is actually purported to be a Chinese curse. And that curse is turmoil, creates chaos. And, you know, since we left, as you said, Cheyenne wrapped up on Thursday night, March 12, and got packed up and headed home the 13th. I started back in Saturday morning at work, started looking and the whole world had changed. And, you know, I had to start early that morning because working and making changes to take care of my employees, as I know many of you had to do the same. You know, I felt I had a moral, in a legal obligation to protect them. And as this has moved forward, it has been an interesting journey. And regardless of what your opinions are on the actions that have been taken, this is where we are. And so what we find ourselves is with the federal government providing huge, a huge relief package to the state. And I for one feel strongly that we need to take strong action to get these funds in particular to our small businesses that have been damaged. And the leadership of both bodies, I want to commend for getting out front of this and pushing very hard to make sure that the integrity of the Wyoming Legislature, the integrity of our fundamental process of how we govern in the state of Wyoming is protected. And that is, they could have sat idly by, as many other, as leadership did in many other states, and let the executive make all of the policy decisions and dole out these funds. But instead, they took a path which has taken a tremendous amount of time and energy to allow us, representatives of state Wyoming, here in the House in particular, those the most closest to the people, start to dictate what that policy will be and to exercise our prerogative, our right as a legislature to appropriate money. I also want to tip my hat to our chief executive, who has consistently respected the separation of powers. And by calling us in the special section, recognizes the fact that this is important. So we are here today with a set of rules that has drawn a certain amount of criticism. And I think criticism is wonderful. And I think everyone on this, in this meeting has a right to question. But I also want you to question with an open mind and listen. These rules that are before you, with one exception, I'll touch on those, were the same rules used in 1981 with the special session and then again in 2004 for the special session. What was the reason for these special rules, the mirror bills? It was to be able to move a small set, in some cases only one bill, through in an expeditious manner. All, so there's five bills that are up, five potential bills are up. Four of them have been worked, three of them by Management Council in public meetings, left open, reworked, commented on and worked again. The fourth bill by the Minerals Committee. And then there is a fifth bill up there that has not been worked at all. But as a result, in order to be able to move swiftly, these bills provide for that mirror bill process, something that we use every, every year with our budget process. Okay? This works. This allows us to get the bill, which had been worked, which had been vetted, maybe not as much as everybody would like, but they've been vetted, allows them to get introduced, explained. And because four of the five bills have all been posted, the amendments, everybody's had an opportunity to get their amendments. We will work, we will debate those. Are these bills perfect? No. But they're good and they're good for the people of Wyoming. So I encourage us to pass these rules, just work this. Just get these, as the speaker has eloquently stated, first things first. This is not new or unusual. We are actually relying upon the process used by those that have come before us nearly 40 years ago. It's a process that we use every year with the budget. We're familiar with it. The one exception I said that is there is the heightened seconds. And those heightened seconds are a new addition. And I say that, I think for the Senate, six, it's 12 for the House. And the reason for that is now with, instead of one bill to consider in a one-day special session, we're looking at four or five. We need to make sure that one person does not filibuster this special session. That means that there is interest of 12 people in the House, 12 seconds. We'll debate that, we'll spend time, and that is why that particular amendment was brought. Folks, this is trying. I'm tired, I'm not happy to be here, quite frankly. And one thing I don't like, and I can already see this as I speak, I love looking, well, I don't love, but I enjoy looking each and every one of you in the face when I speak and feeling that feedback. And I'm not feeling that love from all of you right now because the computer screen is cold. I hope, and I know that we will get through this. First things first, we will get this state on the right track. We will get some funds, in particular something close to my heart, out to those small businesses that have been hurt during this period of time. Those are our constituents, those are the people we hear from. So we need to move and we should move and do so as a legislature. I do hope that by the end of, or sometime next month, that we're all able to meet again in the Capitol where we will resume, second things second, debate and move as we're more used to moving as a body. And then I can look all of you in the eye and enjoy my diatribes much more. So with that, I encourage an eye vote on this. And I will yield the floor to the Majority Floor Leader to walk you through a more technical explanation of the rules.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Chairman Greer, for the opening. So members, Chairman Greer opened his comments. He talked about, you know, the potential chaos. Well, rules are to create order, create orders that we can do the business that's incumbent upon us to do. We take, use this process to make good bills better. You've heard me say that before. I still believe that's what we're to do. Make good bills better and the rules give us an order in which to do that. A respectful order that the citizens of the state deserve and the institution is upheld. So members, I'm just going to walk quickly through the rules. And certainly, Mr. Speaker is going to give anybody a chance to make comment or upon the rules as after that's complete. But these proposed rules, 23-1A, I want to point out that little Romanate I and Romanate double I are the, really the separation between the first things first and the second thing second. I.e., the first one is what we're doing now, May 2020. The second bullet point, the second subparagraph, is what we will do if we reconvene during the interim for more work. And the rest of these rules, barring one section at the very last, are all about May 2020. So as Chairman Greer mentioned, the work that we will do will be back to our regular order once we're past this May 2020 special session. So quickly, as we go through, as Chairman mentioned, mirror bills. The, we're only going to enact one into law, just like we do the budget. Working down through, one thing I'll note, members, is there's a lot of rules here that are notwithstanding or held in bay for the purpose of this special session. That includes three readings during, on separate days, et cetera, et cetera. Those were suspended or will be suspended if these rules are adopted so that we can accommodate the work that we have. Now, we've tried to make accommodations in other ways with how amendments are proposed and the timelines, et cetera. So we're doing our best to try to accommodate both the need for the work and the process as well. So as we go into the following page, we talk about the amendments. And Chairman Greer mentioned the seconds. As you will recall, these don't have to be multiple people on your amendment as presented. It just needs to be folks that raise their hand in support of your amendment. And the chief clerk will take that tally. When it reaches 12, the amendment is introduced and we'll proceed with the amendment. The, I will note, just like in the budget bill, we'll have plenty of discussion. There are limitations twice during any reading and five-minute limit on each speaking time. There will be no amendments. It'll be out of order if these rules are adopted to offer amendments during committee of the whole. I know most of you have read these. I'm just trying to hit the few high points of where we are. The, we'll certainly have a committee of the whole chairman and they will work us through the bills. But as, and there will be plenty of discussion, but there will not be any amendments. Again. The final thing I would note, and I'm just going to go right to the bottom of the rules, is the work we're doing here today, as opposed to not all of us being in the chamber, we are considering ourselves a virtual chamber. So you are present and the work we do here on behalf of Wyoming, it is real, it is meaningful if we adopt these rules. So I would ask you to please adopt these rules. Certainly ask questions if there are questions. And I have my rulebook here and there's other experts on the, on our, on the team as well, on our, in our body. But these rules will help us get the work done, the first steps first, and do it in an orderly way on behalf of the citizens of Wyoming. And then when we come to second thing second, we'll have all the committee meetings, we'll have everything that you're used to having and we'll continue to do the work we need to do. So with that, Mr. Speaker, I'd be glad to stand for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader. And members, so I'd like you just to, if you can just raise your blue hand on the Zoom platform if you have questions. I'd first like to do questions for discussion. And then I will just work this really like a bill if there are any amendments to these proposed rules. And I would just remind you that we have rules for the 65th Legislature. And so these proposed rules for the special session are an amendment to that. And so if someone makes, you can make an amendment to this amendment. But as you all know, you can't amend an amendment to an amendment. And so there'll be, so that's the order. I'd like to just go in discussion and questions if you have questions. And then we'll actually move to amendments. And so I'm going to start working down my list of Representative Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Am I okay in terms of audio? Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My question is about the seconds provision. I believe it was kind of answered in Chairman Greer's comments, but there is nothing in the historical record that that seconds provision has ever been included in any rules, correct?
Mr. Speaker, this is Representative Barlow.
Go ahead, Representative.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So that is also our understanding of the several previous special sessions that were relied on for the drafting of these rules. The seconds was not included in them. And I think as Chairman Greer mentioned, some of them had only a single bill and were multiple, several days longer than ours. And so this was one way that we were proposing to make sure that the cream rises to the top, that people that have good ideas and have support for those ideas, those ideas will be heard. It still takes 31 to pass an amendment, still takes 31 to pass a bill. So having a bar of 12 to get that idea on the floor, that's what the intention is. And I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, now Representative Washit.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I don't know why my video feed has been blocked, but my question is the 12. Where did the number 12 come from? All right, I'll go it. Where did the number 12 come from? Is it an arbitrary decision or is there a basis in parliamentary rules for using the number 12 for the number of required seconds?
Representative Barlow?
Mr.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So I can't give you, I can't, I can't respond to where there's, if there's a precedence. There's a certain amount of precedence in our rules. I cannot speak to the, whether there's a precedence in some other format such as Mason's Manual or something like that. So I'm sorry, I cannot elucidate on that. 20%, it's 20% of the body is what we're talking about. 21 plus 1% of the body, 20% plus 1 of the body. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Representative Hallinam?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My question is, on these amendments, does the amender, the author of the amendment get a chance to say what the amendment is before we get the seconds?
Okay, Representative Barlow, you want to continue?
Mr. Speaker, so as currently understood, I don't believe that is the case. The the vote would be taken before the amendment would be explained. It would be just a motion, and then the seconds, and then the explanation. That is the current understanding and verbiage of the proposed rule. So no, there is no explanation before the seconds would be required. Thank you.
Okay, next, thank you. Next is Representative Roscoe.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This is a technical glitch on my part. I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, Representative Clem.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. So my question has more to do with the five-minute discussion period. Looking through some of these amendments, and some of them are quite elaborate, although they may be simple in the function in which they're going to be performed. But I'm concerned that we're stifling debate and that we're not really giving ourselves adequate amount of time to actually digest what exactly we're dealing with, particularly when it comes to some of these amendments. And so, so, and with that, I just want to be clear, the ramifications, if, you know, if we decide not to vote forward with these amendments, you know, what does that mean exactly? And if, for instance, we did vote these things down, would it mean that we would or could convene perhaps even next week and try this thing all over again? Or I'm just kind of curious as far as the ramifications, and if someone could speak a little bit on the five minutes, I don't know if there's any leeway there. I would like to think that there should be, particularly when explaining a complicated amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Hey, thank you, Representative Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'll try to follow up on quite a few of these. With Representative Gray's question is, no, there is no historical precedent for the heightened number of seconds. So that's exactly correct, as Representative Barlow had stated. As far as the number goes, and I forget who asked that question, my recollection was, as we were, we were looking at doing twenty-five percent, was thrown out for fifteen for the House, and then it just ended up the Senate wanted fewer. And that's how we ended up Senate with six, and then the House doubled that number for twelves. That's, you know, that's somehow how, sometimes how things get decided. Representative Clem's question is, is a very good one to address, and I would take this to mean that as presenting an amendment, Representative Clem, that you would have time to adequately present that amendment. What we are looking at on the debate rules is when we come back in to comment on that is that we have a limited time, and the Senate always has had limits under debate rules. And then, you know, always remember what my law school technical writing professor told me, you know, less is more. You know, we need to be able to communicate our thoughts directly and succinctly, and that's always more effective. But in terms of presenting an amendment, I, my belief is, is that there would be some leeway, because you're correct, those need to be presented adequately for the body to understand. I think the other question I heard was also regarding explaining the bill before the seconds, and our rules clearly provide that you, you move, get a second, then debate, and that would be consistent, because if you moved an amendment and got the seconds in a sufficient number that showed the interest to get the best out of our time, that's the intent. So hopefully I just addressed those a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Representative Summers, Mr. Speaker pro tem.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. You know, I really wanted to kind of go back as a member of Management Council and remind the body really why we're trying to do this in an expedited manner. We don't know going ahead, we have twenty days. We don't know going ahead how many special sessions we're going to need to have going forward with anything from budgetary issues to more CARES Act dollars. And we thought it was critical that we get this money out early and quick in a very short session, and then leave plenty of time for more thoughtful sessions, special sessions going forward, or numbers of days going forward where we might have five or six at a time. We don't know how many of these we're going to need in order to do the people's business by the time, by the time we get to next session. So this was really just an attempt to let's get some dollars to the governor out the door quick to the people that need it, and then spend a more thoughtful process and longer days on the issues ahead. And so, Mr. Speaker, thank you.
Thank you. And next is Representative Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I was just going to confirm the comments of, or the understanding of Chairman Greer. It does say on page two, paragraph F of the proposed rules, subparagraph two, this limitation shall not apply to, and then in subparagraph A, explanation of the amendments to a mirror bill. So it does seem that it's not just the understanding, but actually the proposed rules do state that the five-minute limitation does not apply to the explanation. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Representative Wilson. Next is Mr. Majority Floor Leader Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for all the good questions. I'm not assuming there won't be more, but thank you. One question that was, I think, left unanswered was from a colleague from Campbell County who asked about if we do not adopt rules, I think he used the word amendments, but I think what he meant was the rules. And I want to speak to that just briefly. If we want to do the business we have before us, we and our colleagues at the other end of the hallway need to adopt joint rules so that we are operating in the same manner, the same understanding, and that the citizens of Wyoming understand that process. So if there are proposals to amend the rules, if they only apply to actions that happen in our body, then maybe there's some latitude, but if they affect the actions that take place through the conference committee, et cetera, then we have, we have a more difficult circumstance, and our time and our efforts will be spent in process things instead of actually, in my view, doing the work that the citizens would hope we would do on their behalf. So that would be my, I guess, quickest response to adopting these rules as presented. Not perfect, and are only applicable to the next day or two days of work we have, I think is the most prudent step forward. And then as we go forward, we will be doing things under our regular order if we have subsequent special sessions, if we adopt these rules as presented. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I would urge your adoption. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My space bar didn't work that time. And, okay, thank you. The next hand I see up is Representative Gray.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. My question is regarding Representative, Majority Floor Leader Barlow's last comment, that if something is in the joint rules that only applies to our body, then maybe there's some, there's some room for us to talk about that. So I have an amendment coming up, and, you know, hopefully this is within the rules that would delete that second section. I deleted the entire thing, including the Senate second section, and, you know, part of my thinking on this is that that probably should never have gone into the joint rules. I mean, really, we should have had a section that was just the House, the seconds, that we're going to debate on how many seconds the House would need in the House's rules, and then how many seconds the Senate would need in the Senate's rules, because it's not a joint question. The joint question is the mere process, et cetera, et cetera, but the seconds question is up to each body.
Okay, very good. Do you have a question, or do you want to, we can go ahead and move to amendments here in just one second?
Well, my opinion is this, if we delete the entire seconds provision is your feeling that we can continue to move forward because the Senate provision doesn't apply to us, and it's like, you know, if you went through this document and went through and saw how many space bars there were, and say at one point the Senate document had two and the House had one, we could still continue, you know? And so if it doesn't apply to the Senate, if we delete the seconds provision, is your feeling is that we can continue with the session? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Representative Majority Floor Leader Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So while I did make the statement that there's a potential, I don't know what the outcome of that would be, because we would have to probably recess, convene with our our staff and our legal folks to understand what the implications would be, and review Masons to see how joint rules, some of the basics of joint rules. So while I, I don't, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Speaker. I'm not saying it's not possible, but how much of our time and day do we spend on something that I think people are going to find? Either have the seconds or you don't when we come to these amendments, and I would respectfully suggest that I don't think the bar is going to be, will be overcome fairly quickly once we get into the flow of things. So, I mean, I would, I'm going to respectfully suggest that we go ahead and adopt these rules. If there's an amendment and it's offered, you know, vote as you wish, but expediting our process is not mean we don't get, we have less ability to do the work, just means we get to it sooner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Representative Greer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just recall my first year on rules, probably eight years ago, trying to do something on the joint rules, and it requires both houses to mirror up. So my feeling is, is if we don't pass, we don't, we don't pass this as is, you have to, as Representative Barlow said, you have to go back to the drawing board, and you have to come back with another set. And so that's, he's absolutely right. It's going to take some time to do that.
Okay, members, I don't see any other questions. Here's what I'd like to do now is move to amendments. And if there's some amendments on the rules, and I'm trusting you have a copy right in front of you, I pulled it up off the website today. So the first rule, I'll just go really page one. And again, I think as a good Majority Floor Leader spoke, that really on page one, the only thing that will last after this first things first session is really Romanate two. Everything else will go away after that. Are there any amendments on page one? Looking for a blue hand. Okay, I'm going to move to page two. Are there any amendments to these amended rules? Okay, I'm going to keep scrolling, and I'm looking at the participants bar. I'm going to scroll to page three. Are there any amendments? Any proposed amendments to the amendment? Okay, page four, are there any amendments to the proposed amended rule?
Mr. Speaker, yeah, I've got.
Go ahead and raise your hand if you would. Okay, Representative Gray.
Okay, so I would like to move my amendment that I posted online. It is amendment number one to joint rules, the joint rules of the House. So it amends the seconds provision, and it removes the seconds provision in the joint rules, and it was posted online. This is a very serious situation, as we've talked about, and look at our country's history, the hardship that we've overcome, just throwing out some of the things, Civil War, World War One, Spanish War, World War Two. And yet through all of that, we were able to preserve the ability for members to bring amendments on their own to bills. And you think about that from thirty thousand feet up, why? Why that was preserved? And the reason is that in order to be a representative, you need to be able to do a number of things to properly represent your constituency. One, you need to be able to bring a bill or bring a motion. You need to be able to vote up or down on a motion that's brought, but you also need to be able to amend or revise a bill or a motion, and that's a concept that, you know, has been around since the Magna Carta. It's central to representative, the republican form of government. So with this rule, we're suddenly saying that we can't do that. You know, it's just kind of just all of a sudden being thrown out there. And the ironic thing is, you know, in terms of crisis, I would think that the legislative branches.
Representative Gray?
Yes.
And I know you'll have a second, but I'd just like to get the second before you continue your explanation. And then I'd remind us too, I think we all understand the rule. Is there a second? If you could just raise your blue hand out there, and I'll count that as a second. Okay, thank you. That is Representative Stivar is the second. Please continue, Representative Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So the ironic thing is that in terms of crises, the way that I would think a representative body responded to crisis is having more opportunities for amendments, maybe even an extra reading. I think that that would be more leaning on that side in terms of this is a very difficult situation. We need to have that full representation, that deliberation, not to the point of overboard, but we need to have that process. But instead, we're going backwards. We're going to have two readings for amendments, so I'm not challenging. And now we're going to say we have to have these seconds. And I think that's really unfortunate. I think this should be voted down. We have days where we do ten to fifteen bills on first reading, probably five to six on second, ten to fifteen on third reading. I'm not saying I disagree with that, but five bills today. Okay, we have plenty of time to do this properly and in a deliberative fashion. In fact, the second day has kind of been set aside the morning for conference committees, so we're using that second day out of the twenty. It's probably going to be done by noon or so. So, I mean, if we go into the second day a little bit with some amendments, I don't think we will. I really don't think we will. I mean, this is, this is a pretty low day in terms of a typical session workload. It's a very important workload, but in terms of the volume, it's going to be sort of a medium day with amendments. And, you know, the other thing I want to comment on here is I think we're, you know, we kind of proceeded on this one during the question answer. We're going to get into this question of, well, can we proceed if this passed? So we just got an email sent, passed the joint rules, et cetera, et cetera. First of all, I think it's really disappointing that the section was placed into the joint rules, because it has set up this sort of argument that, well, if we don't do this, then we can't continue. This section should have been.
Gray, can we just stick to your amendment right now? I think it's, the amendment is on the seconds.
All right, this is the amendment, Mr. Speaker. It's about the argument that we can't continue if this amendment passes. That's very important, because that's an argument that was just brought. I mean, can I speak to that?
Yeah, please. And then we're going to recognize it more, members. I think folks have a good understanding of your amendment, and we appreciate your background. Thank you.
The bottom line here is that we can continue. This is a section that only pertains to us. If not, I'm pretty sure the Senate would be fine to, after we recessed, would be fine to pass this. They kind of came to an understanding that they're just going to second everything and meet that threshold, and everything's going to go through, and so they kind of let it go, because people were concerned about it. But here, I think some might not hit that twelve threshold. I think that's very unfortunate, and we're continuing to see, we saw this with the Rules Committee during the last session, the ability of members to bring amendments is going downhill. And in the process, the ability of us to function as a legislature, I think, is being called into question. And, you know, I think this trend is very concerning. This isn't just about showing up and us being a rubber stamp. I appreciate the work, I do, of the Management Council, but we as members, elected members of the body, have the ability have the ability to weigh in on this and having situation where we can't, that's the opposite of order. That's, that's chaos. So I would urge and I vote on this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Representative Lindholm.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I really appreciate the opportunity. I'm on and against the amendment. And my reasoning on this has to do with a significant thing, and that's these rules go away at the end of this weekend. We don't know what's going to particularly work, if this is going to work well. But I do know right now it's almost 9:15 in the morning. We came in here early so we could get after this. So we didn't have this issue, just like the good representative that brought the amendment talked about, that we've got all this time to handle these bills. And yet here we are with our colleagues down the hall, having already passed rules and have started moving the ball forward for the state of Wyoming. And yet here we are on on a live link debating an amendment on seconds. I I would say if your idea is good enough, getting 12 seconds would not be an issue. You're going to need 31 people to vote for it. So 12 shouldn't be that tough. And so really on, I appreciate the the effort by the representative bringing this forward. But I think it's important to remember that these are times we're trying to figure this out. If it doesn't work, then we're definitely not going to do this for the next special meeting. But let's get the ball rolling and start working bills for Wyoming.
Representative Washit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern with this provision of the 12 seconds is that we're not all together. We're not easily networking among one another. You know, we're trying to text each other over the phones. And so if we were live to go around and talk about the merits in order to make sure we had 12 seconds would be much more easier. Would be easier for us to accomplish than to try and do it in this format. And so the fact that we're trying to come up with 12 seconds before we even have an explanation of the amendment, which is normal, what we do, we use, but we only have to have one. And so that's why I'm concerned about the 12 seconds requirement.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have Representative Berlin Game.
Is that open ended?
Okay, I think we can hear you now. Representative Berlin Game.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. It's a point of order and it's a question for me and maybe for folks listening at home. Is there a cap on the amount of time that we have to present our amendments or is that open ended?
Thank you. And as as members of the House know, there there is no, our colleagues down the hall have that five minute debate limit, but we do not in the House, at least in the 65th rules right now. Thank you. Okay, Representative Stiff.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. On and for the amendment. If I understand the proposed rules, there will be no explanation of the amendment. So 12 people out there who may not understand why the amendment is being brought, people who would otherwise might vote yes for it may not second because they may not see it's being necessary because there's no opportunity to explain even why the bringer of the amendment has proposed it. So on and for.
Okay, thank you. Representative Nicholas.
Thank you. Can you hear me? So on and against the amendment. And first of all, I would say that if there is any amendment that has reasonable credence, I think as a courtesy and as professional people and legislators, we're going to provide 12 seconds. And I I just think we will. And the purpose of the of the rule is is the ability to filibuster or to slow this thing down so we get nothing done. And unfortunately, this rule itself, this amendment, might fit that category because as drafted, we're affecting the rules in the Senate, which means we're not, we don't have identical rules. So we're going to have to take an adjournment and figure out how to go forward if we pass this. And so it becomes a filibuster in and of itself. But I would just respectfully suggest that I hadn't seen an amendment out there yet, other than this one, that I won't get 12 seconds and won't and will be debated properly and fairly. So on and against the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Representative Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So I want to respond to the question about explanation of amendments. Members, that is not, we obviously do not have a time limit on this because we have not, one, adopted the rules for five minutes. Period. But on the explanation of amendments, that is not pertinent to this particular amendment because explanations are allowed more time, as the chairman of Labor Health pointed out. They are allowed time to explain the amendment. They still have to get the seconds first. But I think that we will have the seconds if the amendment seems presentable to folks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Representative Larson Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just on and against the amendment and in response to a couple of the comments made about difficulty getting 12 seconds. I have an amendment coming up on the first bill and understanding that this session is 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 short and we've got a lot to do. I've been working the last two days calling my colleagues up to get those seconds in place early so that that in in so if if you haven't been about doing that work, you may have some trouble getting those 12 seconds. But I think it's kind of been our responsibility as we identify amendments need to take place to start preparing and getting that ready so that this whole process can work forward. I think that, and it did. I took me some time to explain to each of my colleagues that I called to before I got the 12 seconds. And there's still no, there's still no guarantee that they'll all vote for it. But I I went through that effort to try and get that done ahead of time, and I think that's our responsibility. So on and against the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Representative Edwards.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. On and in favor of the amendment. I think this would allow us to be able to hear what the amendments are. And so that in this Republican form of government we have, we can hear each other out to find out if what they're bringing forward is worth supporting or not, on in favor of the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Representative Jennings.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm on and for this. This is a lot of money and a lot of serious debate that needs to occur here that we get this right. It it's very easy to, when we get in a hurry, we've seen it time and again that we get things wrong. Then we have to come back and fix what we did. And so on and for this, it it, there's no need to to try and limit this debate and to to say that we need 31 to pass it. Well, then why not just raise that bar to 31 and see whether or not we we do it at that point. So we we ought to put this back to slow this down. Let's spend this money. Let's send this money out properly. On and for.
Okay, thank you. Representative Olson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. On and against the amendment. I I don't really see the absence of the amendment as limiting speech or limiting discussion. I see it more as focusing, focusing our discussion. We're called here for a very special purpose. I think that our constituents want us to remain focused on the issue. It's often jokingly said that Wyoming is better off when the legislature stays home. And I think our constituents want us to come here, do the job that we're called here to do, stay focused. First things first, we have subsequent sessions that may come. Second thing, second, and I think that having the limitation on the amendments ensures that we don't get off topic, that we stay germane and just continue to reiterate. It takes 31 votes to pass something. And if you can't get half, less than half of that at 12, I think that that's a reality that it shouldn't even come forward. And let's just stay focused so we can do the work of our constituents. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you. Representative Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, you know how much I appreciate each and every one of you, but the question here is, does this or does this not stifle debate? We each have to make that decision and vote accordingly. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Representative Conley.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On and against the amendment. I appreciate it that we had amendments out yesterday. Actually, we've had amendments out for a couple of days. I agree with Representative Orson. People were calling each other, right, to under, to understand those amendments. Excuse me. And also to remind the body that there's 90 minutes that we have given for third reading amendments so that you can get your cosponsors. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Hey, thank you. Representative Western.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I certainly appreciate the point that the good bringers is trying to make here. I think unlimited debate is is very important and and I would like to remind the body that we still have that on 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 first reading on committee of the whole. We can debate for as long as we want, well into the night on a given bill. So I think that the unlimited debate is is still protected here, even with this ruling. And I, you know, the the good majority floor leader said that you still have to get 30, 31 votes for an amendment to pass. So I I think it's a relatively low bar to clear. I think that we still have that, the ability to to for unlimited debate is still protected in the body. So I appreciate the amendment, but ultimately on and against.
Okay, thank you. Representative Clem.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I I'm on and for the amendment. I I agree with the spirit of it. You know, I think about, we've heard a lot about an unholy, undemocratic process and trying to get a majority or even a super majority to get things done in the House. And then each and every one of us, the 60 of us here in the House are, have have membership privileges that our constituency gave us to come down here and to represent them in our chambers and to to insist that we cannot bring these views before this body without without others affirming the ideas that we bring. I I think there's something wrong with that. I also think there's something wrong with with a with a major or with a particular council. We have Management Council who who went ahead and and I do appreciate the work that they do. But to speak on behalf of all of us and to put us in this situation, I think is a little bit disingenuous. I'm going to vote in favor of these rules, but here's all what I'm going to do as well. I've I've looked through all of the amendments and there's probably amendments that I am not going to vote for. But I respect my colleagues enough that I am going to second those amendments when they come up because I do think we need to have that debate. And as a matter of courtesy, I would ask my fellow legislators, I think this amendment is going to fail. But but that being said, I think that we should give ourselves the common courtesy, looking at the seriousness of these amendments. And by the way, not everybody was able to to reach out to people. I was working on amendments late last night because I was talking to different colleagues about different ideas that came up. And you don't have that opportunity sometimes to reach out to people unless people want to be called at 12:30 at night. So that being said, I'm going to vote aye and and as a common courtesy, I'm going to vote for these different seconds when they come up, even if I vote ultimately against them as an amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other members and then I'd like to if there are any other members would like to speak and I'll kind of finish this and wrap it up with Representative Gray as the bringer of the amendment. So are there any other? Representative Gray, would you like to wrap this up?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So I'd urge and I vote on this amendment responding to these points. You know, first, the comments from the representative from Crook County that, well, these are going away, so it's not a big deal. Well, this is an important moment in our in our history and to just say, well, you know, it's only one moment. It's not a big deal. We can just test it. And, you know, that's the idea, you know, the idea of us testing this in this moment, I think, is very problematic. In terms of this comment about the identical rules, again, I was just reading an article about this whole debate on whether one or two spaces after the, after a sentence. And let's say there was one space on one of the senses in the Senate and two in the House. It wouldn't matter. We could still proceed. It's the same thing in this rule. It'd be ridiculous for us not proceed on that example. And it'd be ridiculous for us to not proceed if the so-called joint rules had a difference that didn't pertain to the other body. By definition, the joint rules are things that pertain to both bodies and mere options. And it's unfortunate that this was included in the joint rules because it creates this notion, although it's inaccurate, that it's an up or down and and one way or the other. And if we don't do this, then we can't continue. That's wrong. This is not a filibuster. It gets unfortunate that that term was used. This is, this is doing the right thing. And setting this up is sort of a, sort of a bargain where we can't continue if this passes. It's just, it's it's inaccurate, wrong. And and, you know, the other thing I would say is this is not unlimited debate. That's not what this is. Okay, that was, that was noted by the representative in Charing County that this was somehow creating unlimited debate. This is just allowing members to bring amendments. And, you know, I would note one thing, it was alluded to a little bit earlier. And most of the members who supported the amendment were involved in Management Counsel or the leadership that was involved in drafting these bills. And I don't think that's a coincidence. And I think the rank and file member here needs to understand that that this is a huge change and and that we need to defend this process because otherwise our capacity to represent our constituents has been changed in a major way. And I also ask for some empathy from those members on on those committees to think about that rank and file member. Think about where you were and what the implications are of this. And this is a slippery slope. I started to see it in the last session and we're just continuing further and further down that route. This is not meant to be done in any negative spirit. This is, this is about doing the right thing. We can continue if this fails, if this if this amendment passes and this change proceeds. And we'll just have a couple more amendments. And frankly, I think the time we spent on those amendments, probably spent more time on this rule, which is unfortunate. But we needed to have the debate because that's what was proposed. So I urge and I vote on this rule and I I thank you for the, I for this rule change and thank you for the time.
Hey, members, I'm just going to ask the chief clerk to call the roll. And with 60 of us, we're on different screens and and I just want to make sure it's clear. So Chief Clerk, we're voting members on the amendment to the amendment of the rules. And this amendment would remove the seconds provision. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Arlo.
No.
No. Blackburn. Blackburn.
Hi.
Blake.
No.
No. Brown.
No.
No. Burkhart.
No.
No. Berlin game.
No.
No. Clausen. Clausen.
No.
No. Clem.
Aye.
Aye. Clifford.
No.
No. Connolly.
No.
No. Crank.
No.
No. Dayton Selman.
No.
No. Duncan.
No.
No. Edwards.
Aye.
Aye. Eklund.
No.
No. Air.
No.
No. Flitner.
No.
No. Freeman.
No.
No. Furphy.
No.
No. Gray.
Aye.
Aye. Greer.
No.
No. Haley.
No.
No. Helen Anne.
Aye.
Aye. Henderson.
No.
No. Hunt.
No.
No. Jennings.
Aye.
Aye. Kenner.
No.
No. Kirkbry.
No.
No. Larson Lloyd.
No.
No. Larson Dan.
Aye.
Aye. Lindholm.
No.
No. Laux.
Aye.
Aye. McGuire.
No.
No. Miller.
Aye.
Aye. Newsom. Newsom. Nicholas.
No.
Newsom is a no. Nicholas?
No.
No. Northrup.
No.
No. Obermuller.
No.
No. Olson.
No.
No. Paxton.
No.
No. Pelkey.
No.
No. Piperinen.
Aye.
Aye. Ponell.
No.
No. Roscoe.
No.
No. Salazar.
Aye.
Aye. Schwartz.
No.
No. Simpson.
No.
No. Summers.
No.
No. Stiff.
Aye.
Aye. Stibar.
Aye.
Aye. Sweeney.
No.
No. Tass.
Aye.
Aye. Walters.
No.
No. Washett.
Aye.
Aye. Western.
No.
No. Wilson.
No.
No. Winter. Winter.
No.
No. Yen.
No.
No. Zwanitzer.
No.
No. Mr. Speaker.
No.
No. And Representative Blackburn was an aye. I did not repeat that.
Okay, thank you.
Closing vote. Are there any changes? Raise your blue hand. Closing vote. Are there any changes? Representative Winter? No to aye. Is that correct?
Yeah, I can hear him on the floor. That's correct. No to aye for Representative Winter.
Wait, Winter, no to aye. Further changes? Further changes? Closing vote. The vote is closed. Seventeen aye, forty-three no.
Okay, thank you. That amendment has failed. Now we're back on the amendment to the sixty-fifth rules. Are there any further amendments? Members, if you have further amendments, just raise your blue hand on the screen. Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? I'm not seeing any blue hands. Okay, the question then is the, um, is the amendment of the special session rules to the rules of the sixty-fifth legislature Wyoming House. Chief Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Arlo.
Aye.
Aye. Blackburn.
Aye.
Aye. Blake.
Aye.
Aye. Brown.
Aye.
Aye. Burkhart.
Aye.
Aye. Burlingame.
Aye.
Aye. Clausen.
Aye.
Aye. Clem.
Aye.
Aye. Clifford.
Aye.
Aye. Connolly.
Aye.
Aye. Crank.
Aye.
Aye. Dayton Selman.
Aye.
Aye. Duncan.
Aye.
Aye. Edwards.
No.
No. Eklund.
Aye.
Aye. Air.
Aye.
Aye. Flitner.
Aye.
Aye. Freeman.
Aye.
Aye. Furphy.
Aye.
Aye. Gray.
No.
No. Greer.
Aye.
Aye. Haley.
Aye.
Aye. Helenan.
Aye.
Aye. Henderson.
Aye.
Aye. Hunt.
Aye.
Aye. Jennings.
No.
No. Kenner.
Aye.
Aye. Kirkbride.
Aye.
Aye. Larson Lloyd.
Aye.
Aye. Larson Dan.
No.
No. Lindholm.
Aye.
Aye. Lauks.
Aye.
Aye. McGuire.
Aye.
Aye. Miller.
No.
No. Newsom.
Aye.
Aye. Nicholas. Nicholas. Northrup.
Aye.
Aye. Obermuller. Obermuller.
Aye.
Aye. Olson.
Aye.
Aye. Paxton.
Aye.
Aye. Pelkey.
Aye.
Aye. Piperinen.
No.
No. Ponell.
Aye.
Aye. Roscoe.
Aye.
Aye. Salazar. Salazar.
No.
Repeat again. I couldn't quite hear you. No? Schwartz.
Aye.
Aye. Simpson.
Aye.
Aye. Summers.
Aye.
Aye. Stiff.
Aye.
Aye. Stibar. No. Sweeney.
Aye.
Aye. Tass.
Aye.
Aye. Walters.
Aye.
Aye. Washett.
Aye.
Aye. Western.
Aye.
Aye. Wilson.
Aye.
Aye. Winter.
Aye.
Aye. Yen.
Aye.
Aye. Zwanitzer.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Aye. Nicholas.
Aye.
Aye. Closing vote. Are there any changes? Please raise your blue hand. Closing vote. The vote is closed. Fifty-two aye, eight no.
Okay, Chief Clerk, I just, uh, so I could hear you again, that vote tally.
Fifty-two, fifty-two aye, five-two?
Okay, fifty-two.
Eight no.
Okay, and members, as you know, that required a two-thirds vote to to, uh, amend our rules of the sixty-fifth. That, uh, motion is, uh, successful at the necessary two-thirds vote. So the permanent and joint rules of the House of Representatives of the sixty-fifth Wyoming State Legislature, as amended, are adopted as the rules of this special session. Are there any, uh, any messages, Chief Clerk, from the Senate?
Message number one, Mr. Speaker, the Senate Sixty-Fifth Wyoming State Legislature Special Session has now been called to order by President Drew Perkins and is ready to receive any communication you wish to submit. Sincerely, Ellen Thompson, Senate Chief Clerk. Message number two, Mr. Speaker, this is to inform you that the Senate has adopted the following amendment to the permanent Senate and joint rules of the sixty-fifth Wyoming State Legislature. Joint Rule Zero 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 One, Special Session Bills. Sincerely, Ellen Thompson, Senate Chief Clerk.
Okay, thank you, uh, Madam Chief Clerk. Okay, I'd like to, uh, recognize Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, pursuant to Joint Rule Twenty-three-One A Romanet I, I move the following list of bills be approved and introduced as identical or mirror bills. House Bills One Thousand and One, One Thousand and Two, One Thousand and Three, and House Bill One Thousand and Four. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, you've heard that motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? And the and I'm gonna just ask for hands for, uh, those required seconds. Could raise blue hands. On the motion to adopt, uh, these four bills as mirror bills, I'll just give you a moment, then I'll count those. Okay, I have, for the record, I have Representative Brown, Representative Duncan, Representative Henderson, Representative Wilson, Representative Flitner, Representative Blake, Representative Furphy, Representative Olson, Representative Larson Lloyd, Representative Newsom, Representative Clem, and Representative Burlingame. I believe that is twelve. There's more there I can. Chief Clerk, do you have twelve? But just just stay there, everyone, and then the next would be, uh, Representatives Schwartz and Summers and Greer, if you need a few more. It's a lot of blue hands here. Okay. Chief Clerk? Is frozen. Okay, we're just, can the members, just give me the thumbs up if you can hear me.
I can hear you.
Okay, Chief Clerk, did you get those seconds?
I do. I have those twelve. Thank you.
Okay, there any discussion on this list? Okay, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna clear everyone's hands here real quick now. Are the, and is there any discussion on this list? Okay.
Question on the list.
Question being called on the list. All those in favor of the motion, and this is just a majority vote, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand by your face. And this is what we'd call a voice vote. This would be like a voice vote on the floor of the House. Just hold your hand up there, please, and I'm and as, uh, the presiding officer, uh, normally in a voice vote, I would just hear you, right? You hear the loudest group, okay? And all those opposed, raise your hand. Okay, and I'm gonna go ahead and I tell you, I got a little glitch going on. My video just happened. So I'm just gonna ask the Chief Clerk to call a roll on that, on the motion. Okay, Chief Clerk, please call a roll on the mirror bill motion.
Arlo.
Aye.
Aye. Blackburn.
Aye.
Aye. Blake.
Aye.
Aye. Brown.
Aye.
Aye. Burkhart.
Aye.
Aye. Burlingame.
Aye.
Aye. Clausen.
Aye.
Aye. Clem.
Aye.
Aye. Clifford.
Aye.
Aye. Connolly.
Aye.
Aye. Crank.
Aye.
Aye. Dayton Selman.
Aye.
Aye. Duncan.
Aye.
Aye. Edwards.
No.
No. Eklund.
Aye.
Aye. Air.
Aye.
Aye. Flitner.
Aye.
Aye. Freeman.
Aye.
Aye. Furphy.
Aye.
Aye. Gray.
Aye.
Aye. Greer.
Aye.
Aye. Haley.
Aye.
Aye. Helenan.
Aye.
Aye. Henderson.
Aye.
Aye. Hunt.
Aye.
Aye. Jennings.
No.
No. Kenner.
Aye.
Aye. Kirkbride.
Aye.
Aye. Larson Lloyd.
Aye.
Aye. Larson Dan.
Aye.
Aye. Lindholm.
Aye.
Aye. Lauks.
Aye.
Aye. McGuire.
Aye.
Aye. Miller.
Aye.
Aye. Newsom.
Aye.
Aye. Nicholas.
Aye.
Aye. Northrup.
Aye.
Aye. Obermuller.
Aye.
Aye. Olson. Olson.
Aye.
Aye. Paxton. Paxton. Paxton.
Aye.
I'm on the floor with Representative Paxton.
Aye.
He voted aye.
Aye. Pelkey.
Aye.
Aye. Piperinen.
Aye.
Aye. Ponell.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Roscoe.
Aye.
Aye. Salazar.
Aye.
Again, please.
Aye.
Aye. Schwartz.
Aye.
Aye. Simpson.
Aye.
Aye. Summers.
Aye.
Aye. Stiff.
Aye.
Aye. Stibar.
Aye.
Aye. Sweeney.
Aye.
Aye. Tass.
Aye.
Aye. Walters.
Aye.
Aye. Washett.
Aye.
Aye. Western.
Aye.
Aye. Wilson.
Aye.
Aye. Winter.
Aye.
Aye. Yen.
Aye.
Aye. Zwanitzer.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Aye. Closing vote. Are there any changes?
Raise your blue hand.
Okay, closing vote? The vote is closed. Fifty-eight aye, two no.
Okay, the motion has been adopted. The following bills then will be considered as mirror bills. House Bill One Thousand and One, One Thousand and Two, One Thousand and Three, and One Thousand and Four. Members, we're at that order of business now of introduction of bills. The first bill for our consideration is House Bill One Thousand and One. Chief Clerk, please read the bill.
House Bill One Thousand One, sponsored by Management Council.
First reading of the bill?
Emergency appropriation COVID-nineteen funds.
Okay, thank you. That bill has, uh, already passed on the mirror bill list and is referred, does not require a roll call for introductions, referred directly to the Committee of the Whole. The next bill for our consideration is House Bill Number One Thousand and Two.
House Bill One Thousand Two, sponsored by Management Council.
First reading of the bill?
Emergency government action COVID-nineteen.
This bill does not require a roll call for introductions, referred directly on to the Committee of the Whole. The next bill for our consideration is House Bill Number One Thousand and Three.
House Bill One Thousand Three, sponsored by Management Council.
First reading of the bill?
Emergency budgeting COVID-nineteen.
This bill does not require a roll call for introductions, referred directly to the Committee of the Whole. The next bill for our consideration is House Bill Number One Thousand and Four.
House Bill One Thousand Four, sponsored by Minerals.
First reading of the bill?
COVID-nineteen business relief programs.
Okay, this bill does not require a roll call for introductions, referred directly to the Committee of the Whole. We have, the next bill for our consideration is House Bill One Thousand Five.
House Bill One Thousand Five, sponsored by Representative Tass.
First reading of the bill?
Coronavirus immunity provisions two.
House Bill One Thousand Five is referred to Committee Number Twelve Rules. Members, um, my computer says nine fifty-one. I'd like to take about a nine-minute break and we'll resume. And we'll recognize the Majority Floor Leader and move to Committee of the Whole. Uh, but I wanna take just a, now it's gonna be an eight-minute break, so if you would, just stop your video bottom left of your screen and mute your mic. Thank you. Okay, very good, we're back from our short break. Um, members, we're at that order of business now of Committee of the Whole, Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the House resolve itself into Committee of the Whole.
You've heard the motion, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. That motion is carried, uh, Chairman Zwanitzer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
I would, uh, I would tell, Chairman, I'll interrupt you one time before I hand it over to you. I would tell members that this is, uh, one of these wonderful traditions in the House of Representatives where, uh, the chairman for the day now, he's the presiding officer on Committee of the Whole, so all the debate will go through, uh, Representative Zwanitzer, who's chairman of the Revenue Committee, and, uh, so he will, he will recognize members by raising hands and so on. So thank you for agreeing to do it, and pleased to have you, so welcome, thank you.
Thank you, the Committee of the Whole will please come to order. First bill up for our consideration this morning will be one thousand and one, the Chief Clerk will please read the bill.
House Bill one thousand and one, sponsored by the Management Council. And let's, an act relating to the emergency expenses of government.
You've heard the reading of the bill, what is your pleasure? Chairman Harshman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I move that when Committee of the Whole rises to report that it do so with a due pass recommendation on House Bill one thousand and one. I will explain section one of the bill, and then, uh, I'll turn it over to, uh, Representative Summers. And, uh, this is a bill brought to you by Management Council, was heard in three different readings, uh, and, uh, over, over, uh, several weeks' time, and really, folks, my, uh, it's about the expenditure of roughly a third of the, uh, the, uh, federal dollars that came to the state of Wyoming. And as you know, the, uh, was sent out on a per-population basis, and with a floor of one point two-five billion. And so there are about seven states that are at that floor level, Wyoming is, of course, the smallest populated state. The Federal CARES Act said it would go to state and local governments, and, and it would, would have gone directly to local governments if they had had a population of over five hundred thousand. And of course, uh, that doesn't, uh, Wyoming, no, uh, communities are that big, and except for our old state, small town with long streets, but, uh, um, so anyway, it all comes to the state government. And that's our big duty here, is the appropriations branch, the legislative branch of government. And so really, what we've done is put some findings in here, Mr. Chairman, and I'll just quickly cover those. And so it starts on page one, and you've heard many of these things before, but it talks about the start of, uh, the coronavirus in the People's Republic of China back in last, last, uh, December, last winter. Uh, flipping over to page two, Mr. Chairman, the Romanet two, talks about when the President, uh, declared a, the, the state of, uh, emergency and disaster area, the first time in our history where all fifty states were declared disaster areas. Romanet three, the governor declares that state of emergency in Wyoming. Romanet four, talks about the health officer, the state health officer, and local health officers, uh, responded with health orders to try to contain the spread, and for the safety and well-being of Wyoming residents. If you move over to page three, members, Romanet five, the, uh, recognizes, of course, the public, uh, health crisis caused by this COVID-19, and death and hospitalizations, sickness, and mental health and suffering, and numerous, uh, adverse health impacts to residents of Wyoming. And then also paragraph B recognizes, of course, the economic devastation, uh, to Wyoming's economy and the tax base for the state and local governments. Uh, uh, paragraph C under that, this corresponding result and loss of employment and income for Wyoming residents, closure of businesses, schools, destabilized housing, uh, has greatly exacerbated the financial insecurity of the state. Paragraph D on page three, line nineteen, to put it, the legislature finds it's put extraordinary financial pressure on individuals, families, homeowners, hospitals, healthcare facilities, businesses, education providers, state agencies, and local governments. Mr. Chairman, flipping over to page four. You know, I, I think as we continue to learn, we've, we don't know the full extent of this, obviously, and it talks about this finding that, uh, uh, the duration and the severity of it all, but, uh, recovery effort will require a dedicated response by the executive, legislative, and judicial branches of our state government, tribal governments, local governments, uh, of our counties, cities, towns, and political subdivisions. Page four, continuing with the findings on Romanet seven, page four, line ten, uh, refers to the CARES Act, Congress has passed several pieces of legislation, uh, all totaling over two-point-two trillion to date. Uh, this one point two-five billion is perhaps some of the smallest parts of the, uh, relief that, uh, will come to the state eventually, uh, and a smaller part of the CARES Act, frankly, uh, of the two-point-two billion. And the final sentence there, further federal stimina, stimulus aid may be forthcoming. And I, you know, we hear rumors and those kind of things, but I think that's why it's so important, we focus on first things first, continue to learn and monitor and plan, and, uh, you know, for second thing, second, potentially third things, third, and so on. Mr. Chairman, bottom of page four, Romanet eight. Under existing law, the governor may accept and expand, excuse me, expand federal funds through supplemental additions to approved budgets when the legislature is not in session. That's called the B eleven authority that we've granted to the executive branch. And we find that due to the extraordinary, uh, circumstances of this, uh, COVID-19 emergency, that, uh, and this whole economic devastation, that joint action of the legislative and executive branches, and determining how these monies are appropriated, expended, will result in the greatest benefit to our state. Mr. Chairman, uh, middle of page five, Romanet nine. Currently, you know, and we waited for nearly three weeks for, for guidance from the United States Treasury on this, but, uh, uh, which is, which is called their guidance on how these funds can be spent, and it's restricted in certain areas, and, and line nine there, it may not be used to fill shortfalls in state and local government revenue. When the bill was first passed, I was asking, uh, members or delegation, our staff, the first idea I thought, and many of you had the same idea, provide some kind of tax relief to our citizens. Can we have, can we use this to backfill a sales tax holiday, or a property tax holiday for those May payments? And, uh, and of course, Treasury guidance was really clear that it cannot be used to, uh, fill revenue shortfalls. Uh, I've been on discussions with speakers around the country, uh, there's hope that, uh, there'll be more, uh, guidance or, uh, perhaps further stimulus, uh, to help local governments as well. Okay, so, and that, that kind of talks about that on lines ten, uh, and continuing down, further discussions can, will continue. And so on line fifteen, this deliberative, thoughtful, and prudent use of the available funds through the development of long-term strategies that can help blunt the worst of these economic impacts, uh, are gonna be really important for our residents. Mr. Chairman, paragraph B. Legislature further finds that four classifications of priority needs requiring funding from these and future federal stimulus funds are, and if you flip over, members, to page six. And so really, uh, how we develop these four, and you could probably combine some of these, maybe you could divide it out more, but really what we looked at, and it really came from members and from our constituents, when we had all these questions about, uh, what about this idea, what about this, this idea? And all these ideas were flowing well over a hundred requests of LSO staff, uh, by members of the legislature, and they generally fit into these four areas, and that's how we've classified it. And again, I think some of these you can, you can talk and discuss and debate whether it goes in one or the other, but this is just to kind of organize our thoughts behind this, and how it can currently be expended, so, uh, we, we realize that we have to come in and set up some programs, we have to expand some programs to allow the executive branch to execute those, and they really fall into these four areas. On line twelve, Mr. Chairman, on page six, relief aid. And these are payments from, uh, to the state and local programs to support businesses, families, and individuals who have been economically impacted by the public health crisis. You know, these bills do that, one of them in particular, uh, on the mere bill list does that. And that's clear guidance, uh, from the U.S. Treasury and the CARES Act, you know, that relief aid is, is right at the top. Economic development, uh, and I actually should back up, Mr. Chairman, I think I skipped over the first one, actually, it's on line two, the emergency response. And that's what we've all heard, and the executive, I think, has done a amazing job. And you remember the early days of this, you know, from everything, from allowing interstate commerce to deliver supplies, you know, we contacted, you'll remember when the Vice Counsel of Taiwan spoke at this mic in the House Chamber, and we contacted them, they sent a shipment of, uh, personal protective equipment to the state. Uh, all these things were being rationed around the state, around the country. Uh, all these things were being rationed around the state, around the country. And, uh, so this emergency response was so important. And, uh, you know, and, and that is certainly going to continue. And I think testing will be a big issue that this body will uh, deal with. And the second thing, second, as we continue and move forward and open up our schools and university and, and colleges and all those uh, businesses and how testing is going to work. And that'll be part of that emergency response. Roman at two now, Mr. Chairman's the relief aid and these are payments. That's so. One and two are covered in these bills. I already talked about the relief aid. Uh, Roman at three, these economic development projects, you know, and if you read the federal guidance, uh, is, uh, there's always room, I think, for little debate and, um, and we've had a lot of discussions and I know you have too. I mean, these are a lot of your requests coming to our staff here that, what do these include? You know, from capital construction. And at some, at our state hospital, some road building. Our infrastructure for broadband, I think broadband and telehealth and teleeducation, those were clear, clearly allowed in the CARES Act guidance. And I think we're going to get more guidance from Congress on this as time goes on. So I don't think we've heard the final word, but that's certainly one area that people have been interested in. As I mentioned in my opening comments where we're, you know, 33,000 Wyoming people now. Uh, have requested unemployment benefits. We think we'll go above 15% unemployment and how do you transition some of those folks to some other jobs? And some of that is capital construction, you know, and, and doing those things. So whether those can, uh, be used to improve our roads and infrastructure and those kinds of things. And then finally, Mr. Chairman, over on page seven. The fourth kind of area that, uh, a lot of these requests and ideas were, um, put in were replacement of lost revenue for public entities. And really private entities as well, but you've heard and we've all had numerous emails and, uh, we know that our communities have been impacted. And, uh, my hometown and, and I've told all the local government organizations that I've been on meetings with to make sure and tag your expenses. Those are clearly going to, the idea is to reimburse local governments for those expenses. For response and overtime and all the things that have gone into this that nobody could foresee. Setting up quarantine sites and abandoned schools and all those kinds of things that have gone around the state. And, uh, so that's going to be part of that. I think also then the bigger part is, um, you know, as we know, I mean, minerals pay over 50% of our bills in this state. And, uh, I don't need to tell the representatives from Campbell County. I'm looking at Representative Pownell right now on the screen. Uh, Representative Bartle, I don't need to tell you the, the news coming out of Campbell County. And you know, a year ago, that had been front page news for weeks. And, uh, it's 500 jobs in the last two weeks. And where just a few years ago, we mined 470 million tons of coal, it's going to be under 200 million tons. Be over half a billion dollars in revenue just to the state, let alone Campbell County. School districts, Campbell County was a recaptured district funded many of the schools in the state. And now, uh, the other big one, of course, is oil. And as I mentioned earlier, and so those lost revenues to local governments and state governments are, and it's not just in Wyoming. It's really, it's every state and every community is seeing this. And so we're just going to have to work through this and, and keep working. And, uh, so that's part of it. That is not really, uh, as far as replacement of revenue is allowed, but we want to certainly reimburse expenses and that's, uh, more in that number one response. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll wrap up my part, uh, with paragraph C on line nine, page seven. Legislature intends to work with the executive branch, local governments to enact legislation addressing all four of these areas. Uh, in, in the near future and over this interim. Uh, and it's, the legislature determines if no additional legislative action is necessary, we say, hey, we don't need to come back down here. No further legislation needs to be enacted. There are certain, what I call trigger dates in this bill that will allow the governor then to go ahead and, and flex these monies and continue to spend them without our express authorization. And you, and you'd have to think, what, what if we didn't get together again and we had a billion dollars left in November? And I think that's really the idea is that we want to continue to get this aid out to our people, our communities, our businesses. And, uh, so if we choose not to come back. Uh, into a second thing, second. And, uh, I've, I've emailed all you or tentatively have a date set for June 29th, but if we decide not to come back, I think July 15th is that first trigger. But I think, uh, it's going to be so important to think long term. There's short term things, but then there's going to be some long term strategies to use this. So Mr. Chairman, with that, I'll sign off and, uh, turn it over to Representative Good Speaker Pro Tem. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Harshman. Is there any discussion on section one? Uh, rep, say representative Flitner. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question for the speaker. Um, with regard to the fact that, can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
With regard to the fact that conversations were already had, um, for instance, on page five, Roman at nine. Where there was a discussion about, uh, property or sales tax holiday. I'm concerned about the businesses that by executive order were, um, made to close down. But while they lost, um, their opportunity for revenue, they still are required to pay their county property taxes. So I want to make sure that if they apply for these funds, that they could in a roundabout way, use them for that purpose. I don't want them to be constrained in any way. Their employees have been taken care of through PPP. And so that's my question. I just want to make sure that those property owners whose businesses were shut down will have the opportunity, um, to get some relief from property taxes in some way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Representative Greer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Representative Flitner, I'll address that just a little bit. Um, hopefully we're able to pass and enact, uh, the, uh, fourth bill in, in this tranche of bills. And with that, uh, there'll be, uh, grant programs and, and stipends and then hopefully all the way through as we amend that and work it. Uh, that will give, give relief to those businesses that were directly impacted by the health orders, uh, that interrupted their business. So I, I hope as we roll this whole package out, that we are able to provide that relief, uh, to all those small businesses that were impacted. I, I hope that addresses your question.
There's any further discussion on section one, please raise your hand. Seeing none at this time, we'll move on to section two and three of the bill. Mr. Speaker Pro Tem Summers.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, ladies and gentlemen, members, um, section two is non codified law. So bottom of page two starts section two and it's non codified law. Not in the green books. And if you switch over to, to, uh, page A subsection A. To carry out the expenditures of federal funds authorized by subsection B, the governor is authorized to establish by order of rule. Any emergency program that is consistent with the terms of this act. And the federal gift grant or appropriation, if the program can be fully supported by federal funds appropriated under this act or other existing appropriations. Any emergency program granted in this subsection shall expire on December 30th, 2020 unless expressly continued by the legislature. Then we go on, Mr. Chairman, to subsection B. Subject to the limitations provided in subsection C through G of this section, any federal funds provided to the state from for COVID-19 related purposes, including from the CARES Act, Public Law 116136 or other similarly purposed federal act that do not accrue to any agency under 921006 are appropriated to the office of the governor for the emergency expenses of government that are consistent with the terms of the federal gift grant or appropriation. In accordance with 94205, this appropriation of federal funds shall be subject to further legislative review and appropriation. This appropriation shall only be extended for the following purposes. Um, Mr. Chairman, we'll go down quickly through the Romanets. Um, Roman at one, any expenses incurred by state entities to respond to the public health emergency and impacts caused by COVID. State entity we, we define down on, uh, line 10 through 14. State entity includes any school district, state office, department, board, council, commission, separate operating agency, institution or other instrumentality or operating unit of the state and the University of Wyoming and Wyoming Community Colleges. Roman at two, any expenses incurred by cities, towns, counties and other political subdivisions to respond to the public health emergency subject to approval of the state loan and investment board, the SLib Board. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we go on to Roman at three to provide grants for expenses incurred by Wyoming healthcare providers and healthcare facilities to respond to the public health emergency caused by COVID. Or to improve the state's healthcare delivery system and infrastructure. And this is also subject to SLib approval. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Roman at four, um, for the operational or capital construction expenses at Wyoming Life Resource Center and Wyoming State Hospital. To improve the state's capacity to respond to public health emergency caused by COVID-19. Mr. Chairman, Roman at five for capital construction expenses to improve the state's capacity to provide mental health services in response to the public health emergency caused by COVID-19, and this is subject to approval of the state building commission. Um, Mr. Chairman, on to page 11. Roman at six, any expenses incurred by the state to respond to public health emergency to address food insecurity. Um, caused or exacerbated by COVID-19, Roman at seven. Any COVID-19 related expenses. And expenditures of the judicial branch. Um, Roman at eight, same thing, uh, the legislative branch, Roman at nine. Any other COVID-19 related purpose, purposes authorized by legislative act. So kind of a catchall. Mr. Chairman, and then we go down to subsection C funds. Appropriated under B of this section may be expended or obligated by the governor, subject to the following conditions. Roman at I is on the effective date of this act, the 450 million shall be available for expenditure obligation. Roman at two, absent enactment, so this is kind of where we go into what the speaker was talking about. So absent enactment of further legislation on July 15th, 2020. An additional 400 million plus any funds remaining from that authorized in Roman at I will be available for expenditure. And then Roman at three, Mr. Chairman, absent enactment of further legislating, legislation on September 15th, 2020. Any remaining funds shall be available for expenditure obligation. So basically what that does is, is if we don't come in or if we don't act and if we don't spend or appropriate money, then the governor has the ability to appropriate it based on what we've created here. And then, uh, Mr. Chairman, Roman at four. Um, it is the intent of the legislature that this appropriation shall not be included in the office of the governor's standard budget. Roman at five, expenditure of this process shall be documented, documented. So that's how we track it, shall be documented through the B 11 process. And, but it need not constitute a supplemental addition to an improved budget. And Mr. Chairman, if we move on to page 13, uh, Roman at six, this appropriation shall not be revised. Um, pursuant to 92105B, two and three. And so if you'll kind of notice, um, I always point this out when you see it, B two, that's where the B 11 comes from. When we talk about a B 11. That is, that is this statute. And, uh, and then Roman at seven, this appropriation shall not be transferred or expended for any, of any purpose not specified in this act. And Mr. Chairman, subsection D is the attorney general will come in and review a distribution expenditure accounting, make sure it comports. Um, Mr. Chairman, subsection E. No expenditure fund shall be made under this section except in accordance with state and federal laws, regulations. And, uh, subsection, pretty boilerplate there, subsection F. As a condition of receiving any grant aid or distribution authorized under this section, the recipient shall report to the governor and the legislature. So let's, let's go back over this as a condition of receiving any grant aid or distribution. So that's, uh, it turns out to be an individual, turns out to be a governmental entity. Uh, whatever that is, the recipient shall report to the governor and the legislature, the amount of all federal loans, grants or aid provided for COVID-19 related purposes. Including the, including the CARES Act, Public Law 116-136 or other similarly purposed federal acts. Which the recipient, Roman at I is eligible. Two has applied, three has received. So it's not saying you, you don't get anything, but at the very least you have to, uh, you have to document to the state what you have received. And then, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, subsection G. The governor shall implement reporting requirements on the recipient of any grant. And, uh, and then, and then Mr. Mr. Chairman, subsection three is really this, this act is effective immediately. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader. First up will be Representative Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a quick question, if we can go back to page 10, uh, specifically Roman at three. To provide grants for expenses incurred by Wyoming healthcare providers. Um, as this bill came out, I, I went and I immediately started looking and kind of trying to figure out where this grant process would come from. Uh, due to the fact that it's going to be approved by the SLib is that there, there's no real structure here. And so I guess I'm trying to figure out if we're going to be optimizing grants. Um, and we're going to be giving this, are we going to be more directional? And how we tell the executive branch where this, uh, grant authority shall be set up, whether this should be in the Department of Health or whether this should be, uh, we, with, with any agency for that matter. Uh, but we just give approval from the SLib. Um, and usually SLib has stuff that comes from, uh, the state lands office. And so we don't have a lot of other entities that have a ton of information that go back and forth with SLib. And so is there going to be a little bit of a, a hang up there as to what's going to go happening there? And I've actually received a call, uh, from my local, um, hospital here in Cheyenne about what, what they can expect from the state and how the grant process is going to look. And I immediately reached out to the executive branch and they really didn't have anything to, to add at that point yet either. So if I could get some explanation maybe from, uh, the good speaker Pro Tem as to who is going to be handling this or what this, what we look at entailing and maybe if we need to clean this up in third reading, um, since I clearly did not get this until just now, uh, what we can do with that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Representative Brown. We're going to stack up questions until, uh, Representative Summers raises his blue hand and wants to respond all at once. So next up will be Representative Jennings. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I have a couple of questions, uh, right along those same lines on page 10. The next paragraph starting on line 12, I'm just curious, what is the current capacity of those facilities? And, uh, how many people have been treated there? What, what does that look like? What have we, uh, what have we incurred? And then on page 11. On lines, starting on lines two and three. That we're going to address food insecurity caused or exacerbated. Could we get somebody to talk to that? What's that going to look like? Uh, that now we're talking about the food chain. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Speaker Pro Tem, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. So back on, um, Representative, the good representative from Cheyenne. On his question, I think really the way this was designed was to be very broad authority. And so I really look at, at subsection A. The governor is authorized to establish by rule, by order of rule, any emergency program consistent with this act. So the governor can create the program. Based upon what we have in here. In the end, SLib would look at it for approval. And so that, the idea is one more set of eyes to make sure it's consistent with the federal act, CARES Act, and just to make sure we have, uh, you know, another body, another set of eyes doing the approval. So governor stands it up. Um, we don't, I don't think any of us know that which programs he'll stand up. We've, we've kind of gave him broad authority to do the ones that he wants. Now, ultimately, when we come back in second thing, second. If there's something that we see that he's not doing. if there's something that we see that he's not doing, then that's where we roll in if if we, if we as a body feel it's appropriate, so obviously, we can narrow things down, but what we really tried to do in this bill is give broad authority so he could get things out the quickest in these broad buckets as he could. Um, then to uh, to get to the last uh, the representative from the north part of the state. You know, there are other members here that probably know the capacity of these two to uh, two facilities far better than me. But having sent that, we've been rebuilding them and and trying to get them kind of up and running. And and so the idea is, you know, if 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 we have a, if we do have a bulge there in COVID cases, then we'll be able to use some of this money to to complete uh, some construction. And uh, I know uh, the representative from Fremont County is probably a whole lot more versed on that than I am. And then, Mr. Chairman, did I uh, did I miss, oh yeah, the the food insecurity. Mr. Mr. Chairman, this was a frankly, an amendment into the bill that was uh, recommended by the governor's office. And I think it was really to try to get to those entities that are out there providing food for this, you know, whether it's our our senior centers, whether it's food banks, really trying to find a way to uh, shore them up um, as they provide more and more food for the elderly and the disadvantaged, and so that's why this wording was put in there. Um, and and uh, I guess the representative from the north, if that didn't quite get to your question, I'd be glad to try again.
And Representative Larson Lloyd, if you'd like to jump in on that answer.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, and I think I can respond to the the questions on the state facility, the Life Resource Center located in in Lander and the state hospital located down in Neveonston. The Life Resource Center had one staff member that uh, was tested. I don't know for sure that that test came back positive, but was associated with the origin of other uh, positive tests through uh, a assisted living facility here in in town. None of the residents or clients there had received it. Uh, you'll recall reading that the state hospital that there were two positive cases that uh, were transported there from a designated hospital elsewhere in the state. Uh, upon identifying that, the CDC uh, requested from the Department of Health that they could come in and see what impact those tests had on uh, that facility. The Department of Health and uh, had uh, in preparation for this pandemic, had put into place some procedures and policies for uh, addressing such things, and so when the CDC came in, they decided to test in one day as many of the staff as they could, they was able to, they was able to test sixty-six percent of all the positions, and there were no positives of of any of the staff. Uh, they were, everybody was just extremely pleased with that, to the point that the CDC has now, i- is now in the process for doing a joint publication uh, between them and the state hospital to be sent out for mental health facilities to use as guidance in developing policy for uh, pandemic response. The point of that is, is it took some effort and it took some uh, physical uh, needs to make sure that uh, the spread of this type of virus wasn't there, and so as we look at those, those vulnerable populations at those two health faci- facility, uh, we just think that it's important to be able to, to, to ensure that we can have that type of protection for the staff and for other uh, individuals at both of those places, and I I hope that answers that question, Mr. Chairman.
Mike.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, your microphone's not working.
Sorry, Representative Jennings, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I guess I would, going back, I appreciate the the answers there, they're both the good information to have, but on uh, line fourteen, it says that we're going to improve the state's capacity. I am assuming to treat a pandemic, so my question was, is what is the current capacity? And um, and secondly, how many, how many in this pandemic were treated at either one of these facilities this time? That we're, that we're trying to do capital construction and and vastly improve this capacity, I'm, I'm assuming we had a very short, much a shortage of capacity to treat these people, and so we need to improve that, so if you could speak to the capacity issue.
Representative Summers, if you'd would like to speak to that.
Mr. Chairman, as as it relates to capacity, Mr. Chairman, you know, um, I'm going to turn that over to the representative from the center of the state, I mean, on appropriations, I know why we're rebuilding and 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 that we had capacity issues and because of the way we're managing all that, but I will turn that over to uh, the good representative from Fremont County.
Representative Larson Lloyd.
Thank you, and and uh, Mr. Chairman, and to the good representative from uh, north of me, I I I hope that I'm understanding your question correctly, but one of the biggest challenges we've had at both of those facilities is that currently we have multiple people in a room and which is not conducive for controlling pandemics. And uh, so in the design and the reconstruction of both of these, that uh, being able to make those single occupancies as part of this. But understanding that this construction was taking place and in place prior to this pandemic and that that was planned. But what we have learned is that they, uh, as they come into those facilities and is as they actually physically arrive, these facilities having a controlled space in in the same issue as taking place at all our hospitals around the state, having a place that we can make sure that they're not uh, contaminating other individuals, work uh, staff or or clients, and so they, I don't think that they've, they've identified additional capacity, things that they need to do. But as with the rest of this COVID, getting, finishing that up and getting it places is part of this process.
Representative, Representative Summers, follow up.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Yeah, just a follow up, you know, one thing we've noticed in in Wyoming's economic downturns is an increase in in Title twenty-five. Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, one thing we've noticed in previous uh, economic downturns, and uh, and the last one in particular is is an influx of Title twenty-five. And and really, I think as we move forward, coming out and through this disease and the economic downturn, we're now and I I would anticipate more of that, and one thing we have tried to do with these two facilities is get ourselves in a position where we can handle tho- those flows, and I only see that flow of traffic for Title twenty-five becoming even greater, so Mr. Chairman, that's one other thing I would, I would offer.
Okay, Representative Clem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I got cut off there, uh, got kicked off of Zoom, and so I I came late to the to the party on the first part of this, so I just want to, if someone could clarify briefly after I'm finished here. I believe this whole bill is non-codified, is that correct? So the first part was the findings and whatnot, and I just need some confirmation that I mean, I I see, I don't see any statutory references, so I'm assuming that it is non-codified. Um, let me, let me say that I really do appreciate the uh, the the work that went into this in uh, in our management council and and bringing this forward for this special session. Um, I I do want to speak to section two in particular, I'm looking at the expenditure of these funds, and you know, one point two five billion, and I'm starting here on page nine, you know, with paragraphs one down through paragraph nine. And and I, I I'd like to hear a little bit of discussion, when I went through each of these points, paragraphs one down through nine, I just marked down there who this, who this was applicable to, whether it was for uh, the pub, public sector, or whether it was to the private sector. And by and large, what I'm seeing is a heavy, heavy slant towards the public sector. Granted, uh, we as a legislative body need to take care of our public sector, but I I I wonder is there a disparity here? Because it seems like we're putting an awful lot of emphasis on the public sector versus the private sector, which has really been hammered, I mean, everybody's been hammered, but but I I think there needs to be a little bit of discussion on that, and then I want to focus uh, on paragraph number five on page ten in particular, starting at line seventeen. We've talked about this with a little bit with the Wyoming Life Resource Center and the state hospital, which are both administered by the Department of Health, again, it's the public sector. Um, but paragraph five talks about the capital construction expenses to improve the state's capacity to provide mental health services in response to the public health emergency caused by COVID nineteen. And I'm uncertain what that actually means, um, because, I mean, we do have the Wyoming Life Resource Center, we do have the Wyoming State Hospital, but as far as, you know, capital construction expenses, so are we going to be building or investing some of this, this one point two five billion into private mental health services? Are we going to be building buildings in that way? I guess that's number one. Uh, number two is, is, is what is, what is the need? Now, I I totally agree that with a down economy, you're going to see a rise in domestic violence and mental health situations, suicide, all of those things are a consequence of the the government restrictions that have been put in place. And that is completely separate from the the issue with COVID nineteen. But I'm, I'm wondering, I haven't heard, you know, i- is our, is our mental health services right now lacking? I mean, there's always room for improvement, but I'm just trying to figure out where we're at and what is the need, and and really, how much are we talking about spending as far as this one point two five billion in capital construction, and again, is that for private or is that for public? Um, because if this is, if this is capital construction for private entities, um, I I think that's a little bit troubling, particularly in light of our constitution, so if we can speak to that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up, Representative Stivar, and then we'll go to Representative Furphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, looking over uh, what the Department of Treasury put out, uh, I have a problem with operating and capital construction, because what I read is none of this was supposed to be used for capital correction or operation expenses, it was strictly due to uh, pandemic.
Okay. Representative Furphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question. On page fourteen, um, in uh, section G, where it talks about the governor shall implement reporting requirements on recipients of any grant distribution, et cetera, that comply with the federal reporting requirements. Do we know what those reporting requirements are? My concern is if we're issuing a grant, for example, to a small business, they don't have staff uh, to fill out a lot of reports, et cetera, so I'm, I'm just concerned about that, if anyone is, understands what those reporting requirements are. Thank you.
Representative Summers, do you want to take some of those questions at this point, or would you like me to keep going?
Um, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I think I better start now. You know, to the last question, um, we don't know, I don't know that we know all of what the reporting requirements will be, but we do know that we're going to have to follow them. Um, and, and or have to eventually give money back, so we need to, we need to really dot our, you know, dot our i's and cross our t's on this, for the most part, and I, this will go back to the the first individual's question. For the most part, this bill, remember, we got four bills. Bill number four is really where we're providing relief to businesses. This bill is really providing money to organization, you know, when, when COVID hit and, and whether it was your hospital district or your county commission or or whoever had to put, implement things on the ground. Um, and hospitals, for example, put things on the ground. This is where we're using this bill to help reimburse those, those issues and to get ahead of the next set, right? So to make sure we, we have enough supplies and stuff to to move forward. And then, and then obviously in the fourth bill, we, we really get into the private piece, and then to uh, the good representative from the land of Camels. Um, and I did bring it up right at the beginning, probably when you missed, this is non-codified law. Um, it is not in the green books. And uh, and and so, you know, I can't say whether, you know, whether you agree with where all the money's going, but it's it is designed to give money back to those people and back to those entities that have been bleeding money, for example, you know, we made it pretty broad in here on uh, on healthcare, we've had hospitals bleed lots and lots of money, use money for a lot of things related to COVID, lost a lot of business related to COVID, so we understand that there's there's things that we need to reimburse in there, so um, I probably missed somebody's question in the middle there, but if I did, they'll remind me. Probably don't do three in a row, or I won't remember them all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Speaker Pro Tem. Next up, Representative Henderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate all the good explanation. And I know that it's early, but I I would ask for, if possible, some understanding at this point as to the adequacy, you know, of 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 what we have available in terms of of dollars and resources and 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 then balanced against what we have facing this right here the next three to six months.
All right, thank you. Next up, Representative Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, kind of jump back here, a different section of the of the bill if we could, uh, going back into section still in section two here, but down to page thirteen, and kind of to repor- the representative uh, over the hill from me here about uh, reporting requirements and stuff like that, I guess one of the concerns that I have with the language that we've used underneath this, and I'm guessing that there's maybe a purpose for this um, that that requires us to have some sort of reporting. However, I'm slightly concerned with what this ultimately will be used for, and if we're going to be allowing certain entities to be applying for loans, and uh, they're applying for loans, but they may have received a larger share from the CARES funding, direct distribution, or something like that, and we suddenly see um, the SLib Board use that as a uh, a discriminatory practice potentially. Um, that we see that they, well, company X and or public entity B uh, received ten million dollars direct appropriation from the federal government. Uh, do they really need the state share? Can we probably, can we, can we probably put that state share somewhere else and 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 help somebody else? When in fact, I don't know that that's what we're trying to do, and so I'm slightly concerned um, that we're putting some type of a a a reporting requirement here that could be used as a discriminatory practice against the businesses and or public entities for that matter, that may receive funding out of this particular bill. Um, so if we could get some explanation as to if this is absolutely required, and if it's not required, what the, what the purpose of um, requiring this type of, this level of detail uh, would be used for, and whether or not the SLib uh, would be able to utilize this for discriminatory practices.
Thanks. Mr. Speaker Pro Tem.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and so I don't know that I would use that term discriminatory, but but the one thing we we do need to realize, it, I think it's just the opposite, it's, it's making sure, it's, it's gathering information, so as you grant money, you make sure you get it to people that that absolutely need it. And uh, and so we don't have what you don't want to get into is the business or organization or healthcare facility organization that has the best grant writer, the most lawyers, the most accountants on board, and they get everything. And then your local clinic owned by your your county doesn't end up getting anything, for example. So I I think it's a way to say, okay, what have you got? You know, what have you received? And and it can be used to help make judgments on this. I don't I don't, I wouldn't consider it to be discriminatory. In fact, I would think it'd be just the opposite. And whether this is absolutely needed or not, I think there was a debate on that. And and I wasn't lawyer enough at the time to to decipher whether that was, this provision was needed or not needed. In the end, we accepted it. Perhaps a good country lawyer, if he has any recollection or the speaker on this particular piece. I know we did have some discussion on whether it was needed, and in the end, we kept it.
Representative Larson Lloyd.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Chairman, if I I'd like to go back and try and address a couple of questions, if I may, on those state health facilities and in mental health conditions that were asked from our good colleague up in the land of camels and thereabouts. The I think, again, it's important for colleagues to understand that this has given broad authority to the governor to look at various means of getting these federal dollars out into the state and help resolve in this bill issues related to the spread of COVID-19. And so the question was asked if we have a mental health facility problem in the state, and the answer to that is is yes. And particularly with adolescent youth. We were, we had some designated hospitals in the state that basically shut off any access. And I don't know that those have been relaxed to date, but there's no place to go. And we have, and that puts us in a real predicament, which then comes to the the question, well, I on concerns about capital construction. And I think that we would want to be careful on how we define that because as you read the Treasury's explanation of that, that they they don't necessarily encourage that you build from the ground up a new facility, but they certainly do give indication that maybe adding on or additional assets to a physical facility might be in place. And as I think of this mental health thing, so you have an adolescent youth that comes up to your hospital and your community or local hospital or state, and they might have a room, but you can't put somebody with mental illness or an adolescent there because of the ligature risk. Well, maybe they could, they could get funding to do some capital construction to improve their facility to, you know, future pandemics or this type of pandemic to to take care and and treat that individual in a safe, in a safe manner. We cannot send adolescents to the state hospital, nor can we take adolescents at the Wyoming Life Resource Center. And so that really has put our adolescent mental health burden on the private sector. We heard earlier comments that that express concern that we're not addressing the needs of the private sector. But then in the the next comment, we're hearing that, well, we're concerned that some of this may be going to the private sector and causing constitutional issues. Right, they all they all need help. And and we're trying to make sure that our public facilities can take care of people in an appropriate way. And so if you've got a pandemic and people are coming in, in my community, they were out there with tents, trying to protect people from the spread of it and and do some triage. I think that that's all across the state. But yet you've got those in private facilities as well. And so I think I think the concern that we that we have on mental health is very real, and we need to address it. And we're probably going to have to address it far beyond addressing temporarily for pandemics. And when all of this goes away, it's it's an important issue.
Thank you. Representative Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Flushing out a little bit of what has been commented on. Especially, there was a question from another member from the city. And I actually have the the CARES Act downloaded into my computer. On page 747, it says, "Funds appropriated under this paragraph may be used for grants for the construction alteration or renovation of nonfederally owned facilities to improve preparedness and response capability at the state and local level." Keeping in mind that it's very clear that the funding needs to be spent by December 30th. So obviously, you can't build a giant structure. But an example, and I talked to our local mental health provider, they have mainly shifted to telehealth services, but they still have needs, for example, to do physical intake of people who maybe want to come in for medically assisted treatment for opioid addiction. And and I've been, over the last couple of weeks, kind of having a back and forth with them about this issue. And so this will be an occasion where there is something that you can do before December 30th to perhaps improve your, the rooms or the entrances to your clinic so that people who may be infected can come in and not sit in the waiting room with everybody else. So I think that that what is foreseen, from my perspective anyway, would be, you know, some some, I don't want to say amendment, that's for bills, but some some minimal construction for dealing with infection control issues, which frankly will have a much, will carry on into the future because certainly COVID-19 is not the only infectious disease that a person might have when they want to come into a mental health facility. So even though we could spend this money before December 30th for these type of facilities, I think the ability to deal with people with infectious disease certainly should be improved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me see if I bring a little focus to our discussions. You know, this bill is an emergency appropriation. This bill is the legislature setting a directive, an initial emergency directive regarding the spending expenditure and use of federal funds for which we already have a process in place for the executive, but for our stepping in and trying to shape this. A couple of things that came up, and and one question regarding how much of this is geared towards the public versus the private sector? Okay, we have 450 million, which is authorized under this. But when we get to House Bill four, whether this body deems it to be devious or not, House Bill four has 275 million of that pigeonholed for for private businesses. Now, some of that may come from the other portions of the appropriation that roll out on July 15th and then later. But we have initially earmarked a big chunk of this for private businesses. And I suspect as we go in and explain that bill, we'll see that 50 million of that will go very, very quickly. Another 175 will probably go even before the next funding. So so I mean, this has in total, when you when you bring these together and interla, and and see their, how they interlock, they work very well. The issue on the reporting that has been brought up, you know, the simple fact is is that the the AG and the governor's office or the governor's office with the vice AG was concerned that we follow the federal guidance because if we don't follow the federal guidance, the state will have to pay that money back. Well, by the time an audit, a federal audit rolls around in a couple of years, things are going to be pretty tough for us. So I just want to make sure that we're doing things the correct way. And as we all know, okay, this federal guidance is is changing. It's part of the reason why these funds, these authorizations are rolling out over a period of time. Even with the PPP dollars, right? Many businesses applied for those dollars. And just on Wednesday, we were given Treasury guidance providing safe harbor for loans under $2 million. Were deemed to have needed those for, to be critical for the continuation of their business. Huge safe harbor, huge impact upon probably most of those loans in the state of Wyoming issued way after everybody's already received the funds. So unique situation where we, as a legislature, management council, tried to put it together this way, providing some initial guidance in these very first steps. Okay, now, think about those broad categories. There there are no programs existing in the state of Wyoming to deal specifically with the pandemic. There are some programs, like the paycheck aversion. I'm saying that wrong. Workforce Services has a program where you can apply for a grant so that you don't have to lay somebody off. There are some programs out there that work. The legislature is not going to be in a position until June to try to lay out some more programs. Except that, Management Council asks the Minerals Committee to stand up three. So the fourth bill coming out does have three programs that are stood up to use a big chunk of these funds to go towards small businesses and then some for reimbursement of larger businesses for expenses incurred and staying open associated with this COVID pandemic. So I I know I just rattled off an awful lot. But I think we have to read all of these in total. And so so anyway, I I'll be more than happy to to answer any more specific questions or directed to me. Thanks.
Thank you. Representative Clem.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I really appreciate the discussion. I want to go back to that page 10, paragraph five, there the capital construction. And and I do appreciate my good friend from Lander there speaking on this. I guess what I'm trying to figure out as far as the capital construction piece, when it comes to these mental health services, you know, I, let me just put it out there. I do agree that these funds that we've got from the federal government need to go out into private hands. I think the public sector is needs help too, but by and large, the emphasis for me is is the is the private sector. That being said, when we talk about capital construction, state capital construction to increase the state's capacity to provide mental health services, what I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what does that look like? Right? At the end of the day, do do these private mental health services, do they own these buildings or does the state own the buildings? And then, you know, with that, if the state owns the buildings, what kind of, what kind of strings are we going to attach to that? I guess that's where I'm trying to really figure out. Paragraph five in particular, just just kind of this mixture. And I'm not not necessarily understanding what we're trying to get out of that. Along with that, as far as the capacity, you know, as as far as adolescent mental health services, we have group homes all around the state. We have crisis shelters all around the state. We have, and to my knowledge, none of those have shut down. We've got residential treatment facilities. We've got psychiatric residential treatment facilities. And so I I I haven't heard the the explanation really is to, you know, are those things lacking right now? Because if you'll recall, in our previous budget that we just passed back in in March, we we put a limit, I believe, we made it an amendment as far as the the number of beds, particularly for mental health services for adolescents. We said there's no, there's, you know, we capped it at the, I think, the 2019 levels. And so if we're going to increase the capacity, we're actually going against the amendment that we put in our budget. So I'm just trying to figure all of that out and and I'll sit back here and listen for some explanation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Representative Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One last quick question here. The representative from the capital city did make mention here of the CARES Act. And I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. So if I can get some direction from somebody on Management Council and probably the good country lawyer would probably be the one that would be able to answer this directly. But the idea that we have to have the money spent by December 31st is a little bit different nomenclature than what the federal government uses. And the federal government, I believe, the the CARES Act, if I remember where I read it, said that it needed needs to be either obligated or expended. And what that would ultimately mean is we can have a placeholder in place, especially for our hospitals and or any of these other places that are looking at doing capital construction. We can have this this money set aside. It does not have to be expended by December 31st, but it must be obligated to a project. So if I can just get some clarification on that to make sure that I understand that correctly and that Management Council flushes that out, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Representative Stiver, then Representative Summers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick is, we've got two questions here. On the Treasury put out guidance, a four-page guidance that said something about you cannot use this for capital construction or operational expenses. And how does that work in on page 10, lines 12 to 15? And two is, like over the hill, we have a youth crisis center. Are they going to be able to to get some of this funding to help them out?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Representative Summers.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think I'll start back on page 10, line 17. I believe the the good representative from the land of camels. Mr. Chairman, that was an amendment that was brought, I believe, in the last meeting. And I think in the last meeting, we were trying to figure, make sure that we were filling the holes that may exist out there. So we didn't want, we didn't want to leave things left undone or uncovered that may need to be done quickly. And and so even though it says construction, you know, that that's exactly what it says. But I think the idea behind the brayers of those amendments was, you know, this is perhaps a need, it's perhaps justifiable within the guidance. And we want to make sure at least the concept is in the bill and and can and can be looked at. And and I think that was kind of the way with the food security as well. We just wanted to make sure we were trying to cover bases. As it relates to what the good, the good representative who talked about from the from the center, from this this community on expended, we thought it was obligated to begin with as well. And I believe our staff, after they reviewed more and got some more of those question and answer sessions back from from the feds, I believe that that obligation went back to more expended. And so we we don't believe that it's necessarily obligated will work. And and some others, you know, on Management Council can speak to that if they would like. And then, as it relates to capital construction, and I'm going to look it up, but I believe that the the good Chair of Labor Health, probably, I think she quoted right out of the guidance. I might have been mistaken, and I'll look it up myself. But I believe the guidance is clearly does allow for some construction on health facilities to increase. Thank you.
Representative Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to go at this one one more try. And I appreciate the, and I understand what the goal of page 10, starting with line 12 is. But what I'd like to speak to and get my mind around is what is their capabilities now? In my neck of the woods, we had, we were the, I think, the first county to have a case. We had 12 cases, but we had no admissions. So their capabilities, and I don't know exactly what those are. And so as I'm looking at that paragraph, I'm curious to know, to look at the scope of what what we might need by what we have currently. So it maybe no one knows this. I mean, where there's zero cases, did they treat zero cases? What's their capacity now? And then maybe what the goal might be. I understand that the goal will be different than what the capacity is now, and we want to enlarge that. I'm just curious of what it is. Where are we starting from? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Chairman Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excellent discussion, ladies and gentlemen. I commend you all for studying the bills and seeing what's what's before us. I'll just, first of all, make a suggestion that the guidance is evolving. Almost a week and sometimes twice a week, I get fresh guidance, and I forward it on to our legislative staff and to certain agencies from the from both conversations and from physical paperwork coming out of whether it's the Congress or the agencies, the federal agencies, Department of Revenue, et cetera. So guidance can So guidance continues to evolve, and certainly we expect potential changes to, in future bills to allow different things. So what we're trying to do is allow enough flexibility. So I guess what, the one thing I'd like to point out is on page 13 of this bill, line 18 through the bottom, we have those reporting requirements, and that, and that's important. But on page nine, on line nine of page 13, it talks about the legal review that must go forth before these programs actually start rolling out dollars, to make sure it is consistent with the, how the federal funds are authorized to be used. So we're trying to build in all those stopgap measures so we don't end up in a situation where an audit or something deems that what we're doing is inappropriate and we have to repay or have some other sanction. So I, I, I mean, I, I think we're having a great discussion. There's some great amendments coming for some of these, for some of these issues. We'll get to rehash some of them again, and that's, that's appropriate. But I think we do have some built-in things on the guidance to allow some, some flexibility as, as the, as things change from the federal down, including on the construction or healthcare facilities or whatever that may be. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Larson Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I really apologize to my good colleague up in, up north there as we keep trying to answer his question on capacity. I think, and I think it's a question that none of us completely have our head around. I think when this pandemic broke out, the question was, will we have so many sick people that we overwhelm the hospitals? Well, certainly our data now tells us much differently than what we first anticipated. However, we know that in each of the counties, and particularly in my county, we have found that there, there is a need to be able to handle this type of pandemic in a way that will allow traditional operation of those facilities to move on forward and not be impacted. Our hospitals here are completely shut down, for the most part, are there an emergency room and some real extreme things. And so then, what capacity do we need in each community to handle positive test cases or whatever? And so that would mean negative pressured rooms, would that mean isolation from other parts of that? And I think that that's what our health facilities have been trying to understand. And I think that this bill is trying to say, as that is really determined, that maybe that these funds will, could be available to help accommodate that and not have to isolate total healthcare facilities down to, in anticipation of something that we later find out may not be as significant as we, as we first thought. However, to a second point, Mr. Chairman, there was, there, we are very fortunate in this state to have our regional, our, our RTFs and our psychiatric regional facilities for adolescents around the state. But even they have rejected and do reject adolescents with mental health. And so the burden, when the cases are too acute, those facilities have been sending those kids back to Department of Family Services or to the Department of Health or, or the school districts and saying, we can't take them and we need someplace else for them to go. They've been going into some regional hospitals which have indeed closed their doors to adolescents because of this COVID pandemic. And, and so we need to, we need to look at how in these types of situations, if those RTFs and PRTFs can't or don't have the capacity to handle those people with infectious disease, where do we take them? And where do we take adolescents to keep them secure? With his vast experience with adolescents, I, I know that he understands that well. And so we're just trying to make sure that we protect, that, that we, that we could possibly use some of these, these funds to help solve that, that, that challenge is, as various pandemics move forward. And, Mr. Chairman, if I might, if I might just point out, I think it's also important, if you look at, at all of these bills, the Attorney General is required to review. And, and I think that that's important. So when we get a little twisted up, you know, what we can and can't do, I think that that's what we have that Attorney General there to do is to review that and make sure that our nose is clean and that we've changed our underwear.
Thank you for that. Chairman Wilson.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify, there was a question earlier about the capital construction, and what I read was not from Treasury interpretation, it was from page 747 of the CARES Act. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Speaker Pro Tem Summers.
So, Mr. Chairman, I heard I was echoing some. Is this better?
That is better, yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, so I, I, I managed to pull up the guidance document. And, and, and in it, it says eligible expenditures include but are not limited to payment for. And then you have medic, number one, medical expenses such as, and number two in that bullet point says expenses of establishing temporary public medical facilities and other measures to increase COVID-19 treatment capacity, including related construction costs. So that's right out of the guidance, and I think it does leave the door open for some types of construction. And obviously, that's why this would run through another set of eyes to ensure that, to ensure that we were following the guidance. On another note, I did get an email just on capacity of the state hospital. I think its current capacity is around 103 beds. It's licensed for a maximum capacity of 183. But I don't know how that relates to current construction. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over.
Thanks. Representative Roscoe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to get back to this capital construction for medical facilities, in the construction world, there's been a push to produce out of these containers quite movable and effective temporary isolation units for hospitals and, and mental health facilities or whatever. So I think that, that is something that hasn't been talked about much, but could solve the problem of, instead of building a whole facility that might not be used, it's, they can move these things around to where the urgency happens to be. If there's a resurgence in one part of the state or another, they can move these things around. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Representative Kenner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for the good representative from the land of Campbell's and the one in the district adjacent to mine, here's, here's a couple thoughts about a possible project here, and that is improving the capacity of the number of beds by converting some older office space, remodeling, using some capital construction dollars and creating the possibility for surge beds, along with the possibility to have some mental health beds, mental health behavioral type beds that we don't have in this area right now. And so I'm, I'm kind of interested in that and, and this, this opportunity to, to help on the mental health side going forward, that would also create some additional beds in the Title 25 area. So I, I think that is a very appropriate use of some of these funds for that area to increase capacity, especially in both of these areas. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Representative Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to the, to the last speaker, that's exactly, I guess, my concern here is, and I think the, the representative from the western side of the state mentioned that, that if our LSO team has come to the conclusion that the money has to be spent by December 31st as opposed to obligated, like I was underneath the understanding from the first round of, you know, guidance and whatnot, I'm concerned that we have all these great ideas, including my, the hospital here, that one of the largest healthcare providers in the entire state has some ideas of, of putting in some negative pressure rooms in their ICU unit in case we have a resurgence or something like that. The problem is, is that the likelihood of being able to remodel, like we were talking about up in Sheridan, or place some air handlers and, and remodel here in the capital city, the likelihood of us being able to contract out, hire and implement and spend these funds in six months and have it all completed is very, very unlikely, especially in our rural areas. So I, I have sent an email off as well, trying to get some more guidance on this from our federal delegation as well. But I, I guess maybe if there's been larger discussion with Management Council on whether or not this fund, this money has to be spent and actually incurred by the way the, the guidance reads, it's not the same way that the law reads that was, you know, in codified statute with the, the federal, you know, our federal statute. So if I can get some more clarification on that, I'm just worried that if we keep this kind of language in the bill as it stands right now, and we get the hopes of our hospitals up, that we may not actually be able to spend the money that we say we have available for them.
And Speaker Pro Tem Summers, any further discussion or wrap us up, please?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I would just encourage your iVote on the bill. If you have any more concerns or questions, please raise them. I think there's some amendments out there, so it's part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion and sensing you're ready for the question, others in favor of Chairman Harshman's motion, when the Committee of the Whole rise to report it, do so with the recommendation that House Bill 1001 do pass, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The motion has passed Committee of the Whole. Next bill for our consideration, before then, Representative Duncan. Seeing none, point of order, Representative Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to remember, remind folks about approving your amendments for second reading. So as we consider each bill, as it's introduced and explained on Committee of the Whole, that, that ends the time for your amendments to be submitted for that bill for second reading. You still have third reading, but I just want to make sure that if you have outstanding amendments that you want heard on second reading, that you have them in, in order with LSO. And if they're not on the website, then they don't have them in order yet. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The next bill for our consideration is House Bill 1002. Chief Clerk will read the bill.
House Bill 1002, sponsored by Management Council, an act relating to emergency aid and emergency procedures in response to the COVID-19 novel coronavirus pandemic.
You have heard the reading of the bill. Chairman Barlow, what is your pleasure?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move when the Committee of the Whole rises to report, it does so with the recommendation that House Bill 1002 do pass. And, Mr. Chairman, I will take over the explanation of a couple sections of the bill and then turn it over to the Minority Floor Leader at your leisure.
Thank you. Please proceed, Chairman Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So members, this bill, and I'm just going to scroll down through the bill, this gets to about four very important things. Unemployment, workers' comp, eviction and programs to deal with rent, and then some, and some shorter term type things that all fit within those categories. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to scroll through the bill, the first, second page of the bill, the Title IX, this is granting some authority for the Community Development Authority, and the Minority Floor Leader, the actual program is, is contained in another section, Section Four, and Minority Floor Leader will walk through that in detail. As you scroll further down the page, lines 15 of page two, on to page three, the new language on page three talks about in our workers' comp statutes, how we will consider the, the disease caused by the novel, novel, excuse me, coronavirus as a workplace injury. Now, you will see some amendments to this, but this is so that, this is doing two things. This is one, to cover the costs of care that employees would incur if they are infected and have disease and are ill. And two, it makes it, we presume that if they have it, that it was related to their workplace. Under current statute, the current language is, there has to be an actual link with what we're proposing here, and the amendment will, will continue that, is if you get it, we're going to assume it's there. And that protects the employer from any liability as well. That's how our workers' compensation program is. For those that are covered under our state workers' comp, the employer is, their liability for those costs is, is limited. As we go further down, probably two, two more very important things under the workers' comp on the, on page four. We have two things. As you'll recall, in the past session, we had a bill that came through, it was a Senate file that came through, that gave a credit toward future premiums because we had a surplus in our workers' comp program. Our workers' comp program is well-funded and well-managed, therefore at times we have a surplus. Now, this has occurred before, and we've given our employers a break, if you will, a break with their own money, i.e. a premium credit. So, but the, the limitation of that premium credit, and I'm looking right at lines eight through 17, said it had to be taken during the current year. And so what we're doing is we're eliminating that so we can go past a fiscal, a calendar year, and they can take the credit maybe where it's more beneficial. So this is important, and we'll, there's another component later in the bill that we'll get to that speaks to this as well. So we're, we're going to, we have the bill we just passed in our recent session, our recent budget session, and then we're going to allow the governor to determine whether we can give more premium credits. Now, this is setting up for the long term. Right now, as you know, unemployment, our unemployment rate is going up. So actually, workers' comp premiums are going down because there's fewer people working. Employers don't have folks. So by extending this out, unfortunately, and by extending this premium credit out further into the future, hopefully they'll get the value of it when it's most valuable, i.e. when they're hiring folks and have folks on the job. So that's kind of the balance we're trying to strike here by limiting that end of the year. The final thing is, Mr. Chairman, if you will, page four, 19, lines 19 through 22, as, as folks will remember, the workers' comp program is set up with basically two metrics about what your premium rates are. There's a base rate, and then it's modified by how much illness, how many incidents, how many claims there are, and the cost of those claims. And so there's a matrix that you determine, it's not just how many or how much, it's now a combination of the two. And so what this is saying is COVID-19 does not count against that experience rating, towards that experience rating, excuse me. Therefore, the, the employers would not have an increase in case they happen to be in a community where there was a lot of COVID-19. We're assuming that was work-related, but the employers who pay the bill for workers' comp are not going to be subject to that. We're going to backfill that to the extent possible with CARES funds. So this is a hold harmless for the employer, we cover the employees, and we give the employers more time to take the credit. So that's the workers' comp. Mr. Chairman, I think it's probably most appropriate that I pause there if there's any questions on Section One. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question on Section One of House Bill 1002? Seeing none yet, Majority Floor Leader Barlow, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Section Two, this is continuing what we did in our last section. You will see that we have the Enrolled Act 49. And so what we're doing with this one is taking that enrolled act and saying they can go beyond with this as well, with that act as well. So they have more time, you'll see, we're adding basically six months onto the time that the employers could take this credit. And, Mr. Chairman, I think that's, as I said earlier, valuable for employers because hopefully we're getting closer to full employment when we get there. Mr. Chairman, I, since I, I should have, shouldn't have paused that Section One, I should have waited till after two, so I apologize. Certainly be glad to stand for questions, and I see a question under, on the bar, so I'll pause. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Representative Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a point of clarification, and I, I didn't get in there quick enough on Section One, but since Section Two involves one, maybe it'll be appropriate. So the date of December 31st, it's not going to be chargeable to the So the date of December 31st, it's not going to be chargeable to the employer's experience according to lines 21 and 22. So my question is, what happens after this date? Will it then be chargeable to the employer, or is there some explanation to that? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excellent question. So we'll recall that the CARES Act uses December 30th, and actually December 30, worse, 31st in some places, but December 30th as the cutoff for when these funds, going back to the previous conversation we had about obligated or expended. So that's the date we're using for that, and that's the purpose. Now, if we reconvene either during this current interim or in the next session, we can certainly change that date if we get further guidance. But for the time being, Mr. Chairman, at least a backfilling is only available through that. And, and the chargeability is, is for that at this point. Going forward, if we get more other guidance out of the feds, or we choose to backfill it with the state funds, we can certainly change that date, but that is specific to the CARES Act funds, as is noted in that subparaphrase U. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Newsom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question on page four, the eight through 12 paragraph. Is that intended to be a permanent change, that they don't have to use it within that year? Or is that just for this particular time? Because it looks to me like it's a permanent change that they could use that premium credit beyond a year.
Chairman Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Chairman, that is a permanent change. We're striking that year component regarding, though, it still has to be provided by law in the next subsection. So anytime that we do this, just like we did with that bill we had last session, we're going to have to set the time when the credit could be taken, just like we are in this section down below in subsection 2. So we're taking out the automatic, the statutory limitation, but we'll have to address it anytime we do this going forward. So thank you for the question, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up, Representative Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question back on page three, line nine. And this is a change in what constitutes an injury, and we're saying the COVID-19 would qualify, but only until December 31st, 2020. And I recognize that's the date for the funding, but it's not going to be the date for the impact of COVID-19. And I'm wondering what happens if you actually develop the illness on January 1st, 2021?
Chairman Barlow, if you know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this goes back to the CARES Act. This goes back to being consistent with the expectation of the CARES Act and the funding. Part of what we're doing here, just as, as we all know, is we're backfilling costs that employers would otherwise be incurring with CARES Act dollars. The CARES Act dollars run out, actually, this needs to be amended. It needs to be amended to December 30th because that particular part of the CARES Act is specific to December 30th, not 31st. But, so that's what we're trying to accomplish. I agree that we have, still have to address going forward, and as we get more guidance or Congress does something additional, we, we will, will do that. That's maybe a second thing second, but based on the guidance we have now, we felt comfortable. And our, our agency that deals with this felt comfortable saying we can go to the end of the year, and then we'll reevaluate between now and then, or just after the first of the year, if we need to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Follow-up question, Representative Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So do we have any idea how many people currently or through, you know, first through May would qualify for this?
Chairman Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't have this today's date, but as of about a week ago, or 10 days ago, I should say, there were in the mid twenties of folks who had made a claim. And only about three or four had actually been approved under the current, current standard, under the current standard. So under the new standard, my, my guess would be maybe closer to 20 would be approved if you look at the current language or the proposed language. But under the current standard, which says, as you, you can see the language up above in lines six through eight, the black language says increased by the nature of the employment. So folks that have, that have made a claim that, but there was noted, the, the agency has to make a determination, the same way they do with any workplace injury. And what they've made the determination was, was they didn't think there was an increased probability they would contract the disease, in particular in certain workplaces. Whereas if it was a, a healthcare provider or someone like that, they said certainly there's an increased risk for them. So they've made, they're making that determination now. That's one of the things we're trying to do away with, with this, is take away them having to do those determinations so that we would cover everybody, and that would take care of the healthcare costs for those individuals and shield the employer. So I, I think I got to that question. If I didn't, I apologize. Come back with, add me. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further questions on the first part of House Bill 1002 at this time, let me turn it over to the Minority Floor Leader, Representative Conley. Oh, Representative Barlow, further explanation?
So, Mr. Chairman, I think I was going to take on Section 3 as well. Is that what you have?
Please proceed, Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, members, this is a, and so now we're getting into the other, another component of this bill. This is the unemployment component, and there'll be a, another section that deals with it as well. But this is a short-term unemployment. Currently, within the federal act, so act, there is the ability for states to implement short-term compensation program or short-term unemployment or partial unemployment, different ways to look at it. And what we're trying to do, and Wyoming has not done that, and not implemented that, and certainly as many of you know, many employers had to make the decision in this, in these times of, do I just furlough or let everyone go and let them collect unemployment benefits, or do I kind of keep them at part-time or something and pay them less than they could get at, on unemployment? This allows the hybrid. Somebody could have reduced hours, get those hours, they would, they would receive the benefit of their, their labors, but they would also receive the benefit for the balance of unemployment that they could have received if they were completely unemployed. So this hopefully keeps more people in the workforce, more people active, and then has a, it doesn't create a cliff. Right now, we have a cliff in Wyoming. This is a ramp, and I would argue that this is something that we should, we should consider. This is a short-term one. I mean, we're just going to implement this through a program with, potentially with the Department of, with the federal agency responsible. But I think there's a longer-term discussion that was actually requested that Committee Number 10 take up for the second thing second or the next general session. So that's what this one is. It's just, if there's a way we can implement this program in the short term, it would be valuable. And it's something that we were asking the executive branch to look for, look towards. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Representative Newsom.
I have a question about this section. Is there a provision anywhere in any of these bills? I haven't seen one that allows for the experience rating of those employers who have laid off staff members due to the COVID to retain their experience rating and have their experience rating not go up like we did with workman's comp.
Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in Section 6 of this bill, it's not in a codified section. It's in a non-codified Section 6 of this current bill, and Minority Floor Leader will review that. But that, I think that gets to what, what the good questioner is visiting about, or what our effort at getting into it is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Representative Hallinan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question. I, I can't find in here, in the bill where we're going to use these COVID funds to pay for the workman's compensation expenses in that workman's comp is going to have related to COVID-19. Is that present in here? I just couldn't find that in this bill.
Chairman Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and to excellent observation, and it is not in the bill. If you go back to House Bill 1001, that is the appropriation bill, and that's where that state agencies component comes in out of that, in that bill. So we can use it. There, you'll see an amendment to that bill to make sure that programs are added in there as well, both in-house programs and outside programs. So there is no appropriations in this bill. This is purely programmatic. The appropriations are contained in the previous bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Vice Chairman, do you have a follow-up, Representative Hallinan?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Clem.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question on Section 3, page 6, line 10, the date of March 15th. So I understand what this section is doing as far as this, um, this, this ramp, as it was described as far as unemployment benefits. But my understanding, and I guess I just need some clarification, I thought that a lot of these, these CARES Act funds had to be spent by either December 30th or December 31st. And of course, we say that these funds can be used for this unemployment program, but we extend that until March 15th, 2021. So I, I may be missing something there. I just need a little explanation on why it's March 15th, and which I'm fine with. But I just want to make sure that, I guess the funding's going to be there if it's indeed going to expire, at least as of today, on the, on December 30th or 31st. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm going to start stacking some questions. So next we'll go to Representative Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question has to deal with, with the preemption of employment. When we have seasonal employees like at guest ranches and those sorts of industries that normally ramp up their employment about this time of year, but then they're telling people you can't come to work until July, or, you know, sometime later in the summer. Are those workers provided for in present statute for unemployment? Or does this change provide any mechanism for which those employees might be able to benefit?
Chairman Barlow, if you want to tackle either of those last two questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I appreciate the question from my colleague from my community. The, the March 15th date is, it is, this program is not related to the CARES Act. This is an existing federal program that Wyoming has not participated in. And so what, what we're doing is, one, we're, we're giving the authority to the executive branch to examine it and see if it's, if it's, if it's something we should move forward with. And then if we decide we want to continue it, we have the, the general session to continue it long-term. So it is not tied to the funding of the CARES Act. And we get to tie it to, to Section 6, that will be more closely tied to the CARES Act funding. But this, this particular component is not, to the extent that the program already exists federally, we're just standing it up temporarily in the state of Wyoming. Now, there are some nuances to the funding and the funding mixture, but this is something that already exists independent of the CARES Act. And certainly our Workforce Services Agency thinks that this would be beneficial both short-term and long-term. And we're, will, the Committee Number 10, under the guidance of our good chairman, will be taking this up, I think, in our, in our upcoming meeting. With the second question from the colleague from the center of the state, the preemption of employment. So currently, no, and I don't know of a way that we can foresee employment. So there is no current statute that allows someone to say, I should have had a job and I didn't, therefore I need unemployment. And I don't, and I don't know anything in the federal act that would, would give us that. There are some other things. There are, you know, direct, there are direct payments coming to folks through, you know, in different ways from the federal government. But as far as a state-run, federal-state-run unemployment, I don't know of anything that we have on, on the books, nor that is forthcoming at this point or available right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Representative Larson Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question to the Majority Floor Leader to make sure that I'm, understand workers' compensation component correctly and kind of going back to the good doctor from Camel, Camel Country's question. In Section 1, we're specifically talking about the bill that we passed in the 2020 session. And we're extending the date for which an employer can use that credit into 2021. And, and that's really all we do there. But when you go back to Section 5, then we create a provision for additional credits that might be available anytime that the Workers' Compensation Fund would allow that. And so there is where we could possibly infuse CARES money into the Workers' Compensation Fund to, to the point that it would be overfunded and allow additional credits. And those credits would be appropriate up through and could be used up through June of 2020. The funding for that would be at the discretion that is, is, is used back in House Bill 1001. Am I, have I got that right, or maybe you can correct me?
Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Chairman, that was a far more simplified and eloquent discussion of what I tried to say. We've already covered, our current system already covers the one that we passed in our recent bill. Future ones, that's our hope, is out of the CARES funds, we could fund those additionally through the, those additional CARES monies. So I think that was summarized perfectly, and I thank the representative.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Sections 1 through 3 of House Bill 1002? Seeing none at this time, I will turn it over to the Minority Floor Leader, Representative Connolly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader. That was a, a great overview of the purpose of this bill. And honestly, many of the questions that were just asked go to some of the subsequent sections in the bill. But that being said, know that this is the bill of the, of the first three that was really looking at kind of setting up programs that were necessary and responding to the needs that were, were articulated from the very beginning. What's going to happen with some of our most vulnerable citizens and what's going to happen to our employers, especially with layoffs, right? So also know that this has been a working document, and that I'm going to start with describing Section 4, which is a temporary program for the payment of rent and avoidance of evictions. But know that there is many specifics in here, and there is an amendment that honestly takes care of some of the concerns regarding the specifics. Okay, so first of all, the, the way that the bill is written now, that this is set up through the WCDNA, it allows for awards to landlords if they have experienced a loss of 25% or greater of rent from the point of declaring the pandemic an emergency to 90 days afterwards. It provides to landlords monthly payments for this lost income. They must, landlords have to certify that that loss is due to one or more of their tenants losing income because of COVID-related kind of loss of job or loss of income. And it also prohibits the landlord who has received this money from evicting a tenant that they have received money from the state in order to pay for their rent. So a landlord who receives money can't evict based on payment of rent, not for all other reasons, but also cannot charge the tenant if getting money from the state. Section B allows for the promulgation of new rules. Section C allocates $10 million for this program. And Sections D and E has the AG review all of the rules. This is another example where we have the program goes out until March of 21. And that's in order for there to be kind of the finishing up of any kind of necessary paperwork. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to take any questions on Section 4.
All right, thank you. First up, Representative Washington.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. My concern here is, will the landlords always know what the underlying reason for non-payment of rent might be? So if we require that this be COVID-related, that one of their tenants has a virus that keeps them from being able to, to work and pay their rent and so forth. I'm not sure the landlords are always going to have to have that information.
Representative Connolly?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good question, Representative Washington. And actually, that is one of the issues that the amendment does take care of, because the way it's written in the section right now, this is totally landlord-driven, where the landlord need get that information. Right? So it requires of the landlord to do some kind of certification. The amendment has in it been tenant-driven, where the tenant need go to the WCDAs and certify in some different ways that there is a loss of income.
Next up, Representative Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to address a lot of the issues around this. I support this whole section in concept. I have reservations on the proceeding amendment. I am actually in this business. I actually live it daily. So to tell you, basically, if a landlord is going to know if the tenant is COVID-related lack of funds, my answer is yes. I personally have had four or five tenants, when this all started, that immediately contacted me and immediately instructed me that they were either going to be laid off or they were laid off. And then that continued on from there through to this month. Those landlords that can have assisted and have reached out and done what they can, those that can't, haven't. So the, there's been a lot of questions about why giving funds directly to landlords versus tenants. And the simple question, or simple answer is this. If you give funds directly to the tenant, there's no guarantee that the landlord will receive those funds to pay. And many, many of these landlords actually have mortgages of their own to pay. So, and they may have multiple mortgages. The other issue is that a lot of these landlords, the mortgages that they're paying are conventional loans. So what these are, or they're in-house loans. So these are non-backed by federal guarantees or federal loans. So the Fed guarantees that they came out with a while ago is protections for up to six months for forbearance for any government or federal-backed loans or mortgage. And so those people, regular homeowners, mostly all homeowners, they're protected that way. Very rarely are you going to have a homeowner that's going to be a conventional loan or an in-house loan. And the ones that are a conventional, you know, they're okay for now. And all they have to do, most of them, from what I'm understanding, is contact their lenders, and they're being really, worked really well with. It's the lenders or the tenants that we're concerned about. Excuse me. It's the tenants that we're concerned about. And I deal with this on a daily basis. So the fact that the WCDAs is involved makes very comfortable for me. One of the things that I feel is that the WCDAs deals with mortgages, they deal with first-time homeowners. For those of you that don't know what WCDAs, Wyoming Community Development Authority, and that's what their job is. They counsel, they educate, and they actually do mortgage classes as well as do for a lot, that's their specialty, is first-time homeowners. So this being housed into that is perfect. And then you turn around and have them set up with their rules and their regulations on how they're going to qualify or not qualify these tenants. It's very easy. All you'd need to do is have a statement from the landlord that they haven't received payment, as well as maybe their employer, or even if they've put on an application for unemployment. All those things are a very simple way of verifying that these tenants have suffered from a COVID or some related incident. So that's very simple to qualify the tenant, and then to turn around and have the payment, after that quick application, that payment go directly to the landlord. So I support that part. I don't support the idea of other mortgages going into this. And then there's an income guideline on there. We just had, we just had testimony talking about the oil industry and the mining industry. Those people, their income is much higher in the threshold. So that causes difficulties on that part. But overall, this is a very good section, coming from my two cents from a practitioner.
Okay, Chairman Hunt, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a question on Page 10, Subsection D, starting on Line 8. We're looking at saying that the Attorney General shall review and write in the legality of the program authorized by this section. And so I'm not, that may be a very good thing to put in there, but I guess what I'm wondering is, if it comes to pass that there is something about this that the Attorney General rules to be illegal or unconstitutional, are we at a risk of leaving somebody out to dry, or leaving something in the lurch in a time between when that ruling could potentially be made and the time that we come back to another special session, if we have another special session? And so I'm wondering about that. And then also below that, on Line 11, Subsection E, we're saying that except in accordance with state and federal laws, regulations, and orders. And so kind of along the same lines, once we put all this into place, if this bill is to pass, and then pending more potential federal legislation, I know, you know, we've got another bill in Congress, that, another stimulus bill that's in the works. And so sort of waiting to see what happens with that. But if that is passed, and there are further stipulations, further changes, further whatever shifts in distribution of these funds and the programs that they go with, how do we react to that if necessary? So, Mr. Chairman and Madam Minority Floor Leader, that was, if you could answer that, thank you.
Miss Minority Floor Leader.
Thank you, Chairman Zronator, and thank you, Chairman Hunt. I'm not sure I can wholly answer your question. Know that this kind of language exists in each of these bills and in each of the sections of the bills. Certainly, it was our desire on Management Council to make sure that we have done our due diligence in terms of standing up of any program to make sure that it's legal. So that's where you see that there's the oversight, in this case, the AG of taking a look at those rules and regulations and doing it quickly, honestly. And certainly, there's the recognition that it will be done quickly. And that there would be back and forth between the particular agency, in this case, the WCDAs, you know, with the Attorney General, and looking at the provisions of the CARES Act with the executive branch to make sure that we're complying. To be honest, we waited for weeks for what we expected to be kind of volumes of rules and regulations with the CARES Act. And what we got was four pages that was pretty general, right? So again, you see this language in here, so that there's a second set of eyes, and it would be our Attorney General on these rules as we stand up a program. But know that kind of the prevention of evictions and the helping of both landlords and tenants is one of the ideas behind the CARES Act. So know that we're not stepping outside of the bounds at all. And so the concern that we are, I don't think that we should have much concern that we are stepping far outside of the bounds of what the CARES Act was designed to do.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on House Bill 1002?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not done yet.
Oh, Madam Minority Floor Leader, please proceed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was just Section 4. We're going to move on now to Section 5. Section 5 has the Department of Workforce Services establish another premium credit for workers' compensation. Again, we had some of this conversation with the good Majority Floor Leader, and then the question by Representative Larson in relationship to how that premium credit would work. And you see this again in Section 5. This is again, the ability for there to be another workers' comp premium credit, right? If the system can tolerate it, and in particular, if the CARES Act can backfill that money. So that's Section 5. And I'll just go on and do Section 6, because it is comparable in some way in terms of unemployment. And so again, a different system within the Department of Workforce Services, our unemployment insurance compensation system, and actually Representative Newsom had asked these questions about the experience rating. And so just to kind of back up a little bit, know that with both workers' comp and with unemployment, employers are charged based on their use of that particular system. And one of the things that this bill does is to kind of, in some ways, protect, I'd call it protect, an employer's experience rating to pre-COVID-19, so that their charges to these systems are as low as possible. And so what Section 6 does is allow for the governor to declare that employers will not be charged for any COVID-19-related unemployment, thus keeping their experience ratings to pre-COVID-19. And so that, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to take any questions on Sections 5 or 6.
Any questions on Sections 5 or 6 from the House? Seeing none at this time, Representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything further, Minority Floor Leader? All right. Any further discussion on House Bill 1002 from members of the House?
Question.
Question being called by Representative Flitner. All those in favor of Chairman Barlow's motion, when they committed the whole rise to report, it do so with the recommendation that House Bill 1002 do pass, please raise your hand. And please keep them raised. All those opposed, please raise your hand. That motion is passed. House Bill 1002 is passed, Committee of the Whole. Thank you, Committee. The AV online people asked for a longer hold on hands to be able to see your votes. Next up will be House Bill 1003. Chief Clerk will read the bill.
House Bill 1003, sponsored by Management Council, Emergency Budgeting COVID-19, an act relating to emergency budgeting for the expenses of government.
You've heard the reading of the bill. What is your pleasure, Mr. Speaker Pro Tem?
Mr. Chairman, I move that when the Committee of the Whole rises to report that it do so with the do-pass recommendation on House Bill 1003. Mr. Chairman, I will explain a portion of the bill, and then I will turn over further explanation to Representative Freeman. Ladies and gentlemen of the 65th, I and Representative Freeman bring you House Bill 1003, Emergency Budgeting COVID-19, and we ask for your favorable consideration. Mr. Chairman, House Bill 1003 does four things. The bill modifies school districts' cash reserve calculations for fiscal year 2021 from 15% to 25% to encourage savings. The bill increases the governor's B-11 authority to 50% between programs within agencies and to 25% between agencies to provide increased flexibility to correspond to COVID-related issues. The bill allows agencies to reappropriate 25% of their reversions at the end of the 1920 biennium to encourage agency savings. And Mr. Chairman, finally, the bill allows general fund and SIPA funds to be directed to active capital construction projects by re-appropriating reversions from capital construction projects funded in 2018 and 2019, and authorizing the governor flex authority to transfer money from other agencies to finish products, projects. Mr. Chairman, let me walk you through the bill. So, Mr. Chairman, on Section 1, Page 1, we go into 2113, 313, Distribution of Funds from Foundation Account, Property Tax, and Cash Reserve Adjustments. Mr. Chairman, we go on to Page 2, and you can see, if you kind of look right there on Line 15, you can see the existing statutes, 15% for districts' reserve account. Mr. Chairman, what this bill does is goes into 7 for fiscal year 2021. It will increase that 15% reserve to 25% reserve. The idea is with declining revenues out there, Mr. Chairman, the idea is to allow districts to save a little more money, looking ahead to what will be declining revenues. And, Mr. Chairman, then if you go on to Page 3, it's just more part of that same statute. And really then, Mr. Chairman, you go into Page 4, Section 2, which goes into the 2020 Wyoming Session Laws, Chapter 80, Section 305A, and creates a new paragraph. So what we're doing here, Mr. Chairman, is we're amending session law in the budget, what was the budget bill. So you see 305A, just remember your Section 300s in the budget bill, that's where this section would lie. And so, Mr. Chairman, Section 305A, notwithstanding 92105A, the C, and C, the governor's authorized to transfer. And then, so we create this Roman ad 4, in addition to the authority granted under Paragraphs 1 through 3, which is the normal, well, anyways, what's currently in Section 305. For the period of this subsection session laws, for the period beginning with the effective date of this paragraph and ending December 30th, 2020, so for this specific kind of COVID period, can transfer between programs within the executive branch agency, excluding the University of Wyoming, 50% of the total appropriation for the agency. Mr. Chairman, I did have some questions from members on excluding University of Wyoming. That language has been in, to exclude the University of Wyoming, has been in Section 305 as far back as I could find. And from what I have, from what I've had university people research, and certainly, it's been in there in the last two or three or four or five budgets, but I think for an incredibly long time. And I think it has to do with UW's constitutional mandate and the fact that the trustees are in the Constitution. And so, Mr. Chairman, if you go on to, on Page 5, the Subsection B, between executive branch agencies excluding the University of Wyoming, 25%, so this is between agencies, he could move 25%. Currently, it's, right now, it's 5% on the other that we're allowing, the 50, it's currently 10. And then finally, Mr. Chairman, if you go down to see this paragraph as effective immediately, you go into Subsection B and flip over to Page 6, and it's, and we add in the language, the transfers authorized by Paragraph A4 shall be separately tracked and reported for purposes of determining total amounts transferred under this authority. So basically, this is just a way to track, so we're given the added authority, and this is a way to track what was actually done with that added authority. And then, Mr. Chairman, finally, Subsection C, except as provided in Paragraph A4 of this section, the authority granted under this section is effective for the period beginning July 1, 2020, and ending July 30, 2022. And we already put different timeframes on that in A4. And, Mr. Chairman, I can either take questions now, or we can turn it over to Representative Freeman and finish it out, and then do questions.
Let's take a question now from Representative Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess, a couple things I'm trying to wrap my head around here. Number one is, if these agencies, school districts are having a shortfall in revenue, how are they supposed to increase their savings? It seems to me that when their revenues are way down, they're going to need to expend those revenues rather than devote more of those revenues to savings. Part two of the question is, are the monies that we're anticipating that they're going to put into savings, are these the CARES Act dollars as opposed to general fund dollars?
Mr. Speaker Pro Tem.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I still haven't got used to my earbuds. But, Mr. Chairman, the question is, we already have budgeted dollars in education. So, and those are, for the most part, for this time period, are already in place. And so what we're saying is, if you can, if you can do some saving now, do it now. We'll let you carry that over into the future. And really, if you look also on the, on the state agency side, it's the same thing. If it's exist, this existing budget that If it's exist, this existing budget that'll end in, in June 30th, you know, if there's an opportunity to, to keep some of your reversions, maybe don't go into that spend right at the end of the very end of the, of the biennium that sometimes happens in government. We're going to let you keep some of that. So we're trying to encourage some savings in that period of time before the end of this biennium to account for what may be, what, what we know will be a severe decline in revenue. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Representative Cass.
Mr. Chairman, is this way around that university then would be funding their swimming pool and the remodeling to the football stadium? Just a question, thank you.
Mr. Speaker Pro Tem, you want that real quick?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, no. The, the University of Wyoming has been excluded from the B-11 authority of the governor for, as far as I can tell, forever. In other words, the governor can't be 11 money in, and he can't be 11 money out of there. And that's, it has to do with the way they were originally set up. So, no, it, it has, it doesn't have anything to do with B-11ing, you know, the governor couldn't be 11 money in, in fact.
Okay, thank you.
Representative Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just a quick question here. I believe it wasn't too long ago that we actually pulled back and reduced the amount of savings available. And at the time, the big discussion was the pre $97. So, the pre $97, and I would guess that maybe the Speaker and/or yourself, Mr. Speaker Pro Tem, might be able to give us a little bit of understanding on that. This does not affect, or it does affect the pre $97 that are currently untouchable, and we, we don't have any flexibility over with the legislature.
Mr. Speaker Pro Tem.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I will have to check on that, but my recollection, my recollection is the 15% does not include the pre $97. And the 15% has been in place for a while, because it's been in place as long as I've been in the legislature, but not, I don't know how long, but it has been in place a while. I don't think the pre $97 are part of that 15%.
Okay.
I'll find out, though.
Thank you. Representative Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I have a, a question for some clarification. The page, section three, page six, line 18, where we change it to 25%. I need to know a little bit more about that. I did have some conversations with my local superintendent, and one of the things that they really requested, and I'm glad to see in this bill, is the, the ability to carry over. However, they were asking if the ability to carry over for a two-year period instead of one year, they didn't ask for an increase, which I'm guessing is what this 25% is, I'm not sure. But that was, that our school districts are, my school district is doing well and saving their money and projecting for the future. And so the ability to hold off an extra year was going to allow them to really have a little more concrete planning for the future. So if I could just get some clarity on one year versus a two-year and the 25%.
Mr. Speaker Pro Tem.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And, and first of all, I'd have to get the page number, because it, it seemed like you said page five, which is not the school piece. So, Mr. Chairman, just a clarification back, was it, are you strictly talking about on page two? Chairman?
Representative Duncan, if you could clarify?
It's the, I thought it was page six, but I could be wrong. It's the part of, for the schools to the changing of the percentage to 25%. And I thought that was section three, page six, but I could be wrong.
Mr. Speaker Pro Tem.
So, Mr. Chairman, just so everybody knows, there's two 25% percents in the bill, and they're not, they're not connected. So, page two is where we changed the 15% to 25% for the districts. And you're correct, it's just for one year. It's just this money that's going to be coming up now that they could go out in a rush and spend. We want them to save it. We're assuming that budgets are going to cut after that, and there, there may not be any savings. Now, do we still want to do some kind of increased savings in the future? Maybe, but that's a bigger policy discussion. And then really on page five, that 25%, Mr. Chairman, is, is the governor currently has, has the ability, let's see, on page, let's see, page five of my bill, anyway. Page five of my bill, the governor currently has the ability to move 5% in between, between agencies, and this would allow 25% between agencies, excluding the University of Wyoming. So it's two different 25%.
Representative Stever.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick question, does this have to do with, in the CARES Act, that's not part of the 1.25, that the Department of Education is getting like $32 million that they're going to distribute throughout the 48 school districts? Is that part of the money they can save?
Mr. Speaker Pro Tem.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And one, I don't know, you know, when or if they will be getting that, and I don't know the answer to that question. I can find out, this was really not about the CARES Act money coming in. It was, you know, to my understanding, it was more about the money they have on hand right now. And, and so I can find that out, whether that, that money, if it did come in, would be eligible for this, to be held over in this 25% or for it be carried in it. I don't think it would be, because I believe this 15% relates to, to strictly your foundation program guarantee and doesn't include the federal dollars. So my answer right now is, is no, it wouldn't be put in there, but I'll find out for you a little, a little later.
All right, thank you. Representative Stiff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question about the, what appears to be sort of ultra flex authority on pages four and five, and, and sort of what would be an example of why the governor would need that authority? It seems like it's giving quite a bit of power to the governor to really shift money around.
Mr. Speaker Pro Tem, if you want to answer that?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Yeah, you know, I, I guess I will. The, the idea was to provide a substantial flex, flexibility to the governor to move money around in order to react to what has been one of the greatest crises we had. Now, obviously, he has to report that. And, you know, and I guess if we didn't like it, and, and he hadn't spent it, we could take it back. But, no, it, it, this really is about providing flexibility, absolutely.
All right, seeing no further current discussion, let's turn it over to Representative Freeman to further present on House Bill 1003.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the answers that Representative Summers did, that pre 1997 is not included into the, into the 15%. I've, I've answered that question a lot of times. And then the question on the CARES Act, I don't know specific, and I know that Albert will probably look at it, but I think that all the federal money has to be spent by the end of the year, so that wouldn't be into the, you know, be added on to the 25% is my logical answer. On page six, on section three, we've already kind of discussed this. And basically, what that does is it comes up with 25% of the unexpended, unobligated monies appropriated by the general fund to any government unit shall not revert on the 30th of, of 2020. Again, this is a, a means to, to get our agencies to save so that in the coming months and years ahead, that we have money to take care of this, the citizens of the state of Wyoming. And on section three B, again, it's the unex, unexpended and obligated funds remaining from appropriations for capital construction projects under 2018 Wyoming Session Laws. So that means no new projects under this, this provision that would otherwise revert. They are hereby re-appropriated for active capital construction projects receiving prior appropriations. So basically, what we want to do is make sure that the, the, the construction project that we have, have enough funds to be completed. And by, by doing this, instead of having them to go back to the general fund, they go into the construction fund, and we can get projects done. Stand for any question.
Is there any discussion in the second portion? Representative Kinner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on that point, could someone explain that to me a little bit better on why we would want it to go to current projects as opposed to the general fund, where, where maybe it could be used in a different manner? If, if someone could explain that further, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Representative Freeman.
Thank you. I'm a historian, and I go around and look a lot, at a lot of historic buildings. And basically, what I see is, is they say, well, and this is what we were, we were going to do, but we ran out of money. One of the classic examples is the four statutes that would send the, in the, the Capitol, that would be an example. So what this is doing is, is using current funding to make sure that the projects that we have under construction can be, can be completed. Again, no new projects.
Okay. Representative Summers.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I, the representative from the, from where the river is green, he's correct. And, you know, I mean, we have a few projects out there. We had some, you know, we still had some asbestos abatement stuff at the Life Resource Center. I'm not sure all of that's covered. So there's still some things hanging out there that we can use this money for to finish existing projects, and I think that's kind of what we're talking about. And then, and then, Mr. Chairman, if you go back to page two, to, to, to really clarify that answer, and you look on line five, current law, 15% of total foundation program amount. Well, the total foundation program amount is really what the model generates. It's not any excess federal dollars. So it wouldn't, the 15%, 25%, it wouldn't be about any federal dollars coming in from the CARES Act. It's a, that's the foundation amount, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on House Bill 1003? Seeing no further discussion, and question being called. All those in favor of the Speaker Pro Tem's motion, when the committee of the whole rises to report, it do so with a recommendation that House Bill 1003 do pass, please raise your hands. And, and again, please leave them raised for just a second. All those opposed, please raise your hands. House Bill 1003 is passed, committee of the whole. We are now on to House Bill 1004. Chief Clerk, please read the bill.
House Bill 1004, sponsored by Minerals Business and Economic Development, COVID-19 Business Relief Programs, an act relating to the emergency expenses of government related to business relief.
You've heard the reading of the bill. What is your pleasure, Chairman Greer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that when the committee of the whole rises to report, it do some recommendation that House Bill 1004 do pass. And, Mr. Chairman, while every member of my committee is capable of presenting this bill, I'm going to go ahead and do it for us this time.
Great, please proceed.
So, members, this is the economic relief bill for our businesses that we've talked about for most of this session today. This bill was worked by the minerals, was assigned by Management Counsel to the Minerals Committee. It was worked extensively, when I say that, from noon till 7:30 one afternoon, breaking my own rule of quitting at five. We received a tremendous amount, a very good input on this bill. We came back and took our amendments from working it, went back through those on Monday, and had a bill numbered. All that being said, there is an amendment out there that you'll see on second reading that I would like everybody to consider. And it's, I don't know if it's fourth or fifth reading amendment that I prepared. And so I'm going to speak to that amendment just a little bit as I go through this bill. And, and it was an issue we see, received a tremendous amount of input from after we had worked the bill twice. So with that, what, what we are attempting to do with this bill is to provide three levels of funding in three separate and distinct situations. And I'm not going to go through the findings, you can, you can read them for yourself. But what we have is the first bucket of funds, which is a grant fund. $50 million is set into this fund. This is 50 million out of the 450 that we talked about in House Bill 001. A 50 minute, 50 million is to be a fast, hard-hitting grant. The concept being, this grant will be administered by the Business Council. They're already preparing a one-page grant application for this. Hopefully, it is in plan to be stood up, if enacted, by the first of June. This grant does have a preference for those businesses who did not receive PPP. However, that is not an excluding factor, meaning that businesses that did receive PPP would be eligible. This grant is for businesses under 50 employees. It is for those businesses that suffered interruption in business as a result of statewide closure orders. Right now, the bill is set with a flat $15,000. And then, and I've got to look, because we amended this several times, with $2,000 for every full-time employee and $1,000 for every part-time employee up to a cap of $50,000. Again, designed to be quick, immediate relief, to help move those businesses that may have fell through the cracks, continue. The second bucket of funds is identified in this bill in section three, is identified as a loan program. It's identified in here and set out as a non-recourse forgivable loan. I think you're going to see an amendment, one that I have sponsored, one that has a mere sponsorship in the, in the Senate. And I think the full support of the Minerals Committee will make that non-recourse forgivable loan be a conditional grant. Semantics in my book, but nonetheless, important, very important to some. That program has $175 million in it. It is designed for those businesses that have, again, suffered or felt an impact, disruption in business. These are words right out of the federal guidance, as a result of the statewide closures. It has a cap of 100 employees to be eligible for this. And then that program is capped at $300,000 per business. As we see this, there will be, whether grant or loan, a simplified requirement that you prove up what your damages are. Okay? Moving on to the third pot of funds, and this is again in direct, in, in these, each one of these funds came out of discussions that have been happening for the last six weeks of need. The third pot of funds is more geared towards those larger businesses, probably some of our mines, our grocery stores, some of our larger chains that stayed open, had more than 100 employees, but incurred in expenses. 100 employees, but incurred in expenses, keeping open in order to comply with the statewide health orders. And so that grant program or stipend, as we're calling it, does have a cap as another $50 million in it, is capped at $500,000. It would be for things like PPE, additional workers for sanitation, screens to put up, equipment that was purchased to, to deal with a whole pandemic crisis. So that's, that is a big overview of that. Now, with respect to all of these and coming off the last bill, keep in mind that these funds right now are coming out of the 450 that was appropriated in, in, excuse me, House Bill 1005. And as more funds are appropriated in that bill or as we appropriate them in later actions of the legislature, that's where these, these funds will be. The B11 and the Flex Authority now, someone had commented about 25% being a huge amount on the Flex Authority. Okay? That 25% Flex Authority exists between the programs, these three different programs. That could be huge because if we find a, a significant need out there or demand for, let's just say the first program, it would be very good for our governor to have the flexibility to go ahead and flex funds into that program. The governor will also have the B11 authority to take other CARES Act dollars, the ones that we currently have, or ones that may come down the road, you know, as they talk about additional monies every day, to be able to flex in to these programs as I see, as they get stood up and start to be utilized. So I, I think with that, that's a quick overview. If, if someone really wants me to go through all of it, I will. I've, I'm really almost tired of talking about the bill, quite frankly. I just want to get it set up and start helping our businesses.
And with that, you have six people with questions. Let's start with Representative Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a question, but I'd be happy to answer some questions. I received a lot of feedback on this bill and I wanted to address a couple of things. One of the things I've wanted to address is there's been some rumbling by some about utilizing the Business Council. So I wanted to address that directly. Business Council also has access to the economic developments of each of your individual local communities. So these people are the ones who are dealing with our businesses, dealing with our, our people and their boots on the ground. So, you know, by going through the Business Council, they have everything already established. They have things, they have rules. They've already done these emergency loans, disaster loans and things like that. So they have protocol, they have systems in place. These are grants, so it's different, but they have the capability to get immediately into our communities quickly. So that's some of the idea behind this and why, why they're really important to do this because the less red tape and the less government agencies we have to go through to get the funds directly into the hands of the people, the faster and the better.
All right. Thank you, Representative Duncan. Next up will be Chairman Lindholm.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. In regards to, and I, I guess first of all, I should say thank you to the Chairman on the Minerals Committee for putting forward that amendment to get rid of the loan aspect. I think that's a smart move. I mean, even though it's semantics, the optics of having to take on more debt to bail yourself out of a situation that you didn't create is not a great opportunity for businesses. And so really appreciate what the, what the amendment does in, in regards to the Business Council being able to stand up this program. Was the committee able to take any testimony in regards to how fast this program could be stood up? That way we have an opportunity to relate back to our communities about the timeline that they can, they can look at this.
Chairman Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that is a very good question and quite frankly, I don't particularly like having to thank you for anything, but I do like, like thank you for the question. Yeah, in, in visiting with the Business Council, the, this, these programs are going to be difficult. Okay? This is going to tax them. Do not, do not think otherwise. Okay? So we need to make sure that they're, they're able to be successful. So the discussion is this, is that with the first bucket, that they're, they're comfortable that they can get that set up. We're looking at it, that's a June 1st date is sort of that target date for those first grants to be available. Then when we start to look at the second set of grants or the stipend, it's going to be a little bit more. And you'll see we still left that in there, that they could contract with the financial institutions to help them receive or help get the grants applied for. So, so we do have our CDOs, our community development organizations, as Representative Duncan said, but also our banks. And I've said this consistently, our banks know who needs these funds. For, for the most part, they know who is going to need these funds to get started back up, to heal up, to, to restock their shelves, to get their freezers full, to get their liquor cabinets stocked so they can open up and, and start to do business again. So I do think our financial institutions will be a big help with that. That program though, is going to require a little bit more in rulemaking. It's going to require just a little bit more in getting a simplified application put together. And so I would expect that to roll out towards the middle to the end of June. Okay? So, and I think those are good things for us to take back home if this bill is enacted is those expectations of when these will be ready.
Chairman Wilson.
Mr. Speaker, I, I do have a question about page six, sub-paragraph three. Required closure shall also include the interruption of a business's normal business as a result of any closures or public health orders. So I, I did listen through all of the Management Council meetings painfully, so although less painfully than the members, but I didn't listen to the Minerals Committee discussion. So I'm wondering what the discussion was in committee and that I'm thinking of the situation with healthcare providers, you know, dentists, doctors' offices, even mortuaries who were specifically, well, not the mortuaries, but the healthcare providers, they were specifically exempted from closures, but canceled non-emergency procedures due to either CDC guidance or FEMA instructions, you know, and the, the lack of, of PPE. So though that category doesn't seem to fit into businesses that would be able to access this. So I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about what the discussion was in committee and whether you see maybe that there ought to be an amendment on that or what? Talk to me a little bit about that.
Chairman Greer, would you take that one now?
Yes, I will. And Trevor Wilson, I, I, that, that section, that last sentence is, was heavily discussed in the Minerals Committee and redrafted to specifically address the issue that you just raised, to make sure that they were included. So you look about, above regarding required closures, and then we come down, required closure shall also include the interruption. So that's the interruption of a business's normal business as a result of any closures or public health orders. And I think we had direct testimony from the Wyoming Funeral Home Directors Association that was on point and actually one of those amendments that came from that particular group, to ensure it was included. So, no, we did discuss that. It fully is the intent of the legislation to not just be, because, so think about the restaurants that were doing 20% of their business. They were not closed, but yet their business was squeezed down because they're taking styrofoam boxes out to cars waiting in their parking lot. And, and it fully intended for everyone like that to, to qualify underneath this.
Okay. Representative Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've focused in, I think, a lot on retail businesses and restaurants and those sorts of places. I'm, I'm more interested in the agricultural businesses. I just want to make sure that this act is going to reach those businesses that were affected because some of their impacts were not as clearly COVID-related health order closures and so forth, but in the long term, they're associated, let's put it that way.
Okay. Representative Flitner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, and I guess, if I could, I'm just trying to wrap my hands around my question. When you talk about being adversely impacted, did the committee consider how long it might take for businesses to truly comprehend how they have been adversely impacted? So what might be the timeline for a business to apply for these funds? And is there any fear of running out of funds before people really have their hands wrapped around how, how they have been impacted? Thank you.
Chairman Greer, you want those last two questions now?
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. But with respect to agriculture is a tough one on this because to say that, I mean, sure, certain segments of agriculture may be able to say they were affected directly by the closures, but you're correct, it's a much more complicated issue, Representative Washington, than, because it's going to be difficult, especially for ranchers or farmers to know the exact impact of this. And so then that leads in or ties in to Representative Flitner's question about fear of running out of funds. Well, we had over $1 billion of PPP loans occur in the state of Wyoming. My, my, my thought is, is we will run out of funds in this program, even if the governor B11's more funds into it. But my guess would be we will run out of funds. It, it will be an insatiable demand concerning this. With respect to the timeline, so it's, that's a gen, that's a gentle balance that you have to run. People want the money now, but yet you, do you know the full extent? So that's a little bit leans in favor of how the committee acted on two grants or, or on two steps to this. First, a quick hitting smaller grant to, to deal with things now. And then, you know, God, God help us, that by, by July, we will have a, a greater idea what the full impact is on our businesses as a result of these closures, these, these statewide public health orders. So hopefully I answered those questions. Right, Representative Washington, not the answer you wanted on agriculture. Trust me, I'm, I'm missing branding today as a result of this. Not, it's not the, not the answer I want to give.
Okay. Next up, Speaker Hirschman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, Mr. Chairman and members, I just want to kind of bring a little summary to these bills. There's been some questions and, so I see in these four bills appropriated $460 million. And out of that 460, my numbers look at 285 million that goes to the private sector and 175 million that goes to the public sector. That could possibly, some of that could go to, you know, vendors and program recipients and, and private hospitals and some of that. So I think there's been some talk about that and I just want to, just so folks kind of know that number, out of the 460, 285 is, is in this bill and 275 actually in 10 million in the, for the tenant landlord total. So 285 out of the 460s immediately going to the private sector and probably a lot of that 175 for services. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up, Representative Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to give a little, a little heads up. We did something very similar to this in my community, in my county, with our local economic development. We did grants, micro grants with our economic development and they were a, a simple application process. They went through, they then turned around and gave the funds out and then they gave a report, the, the employer or the, the business gave a itemized report of their expenditures back to the economic development. My local economic development got this done within three weeks. So it's already been done and it's already out there. So they have promised that they would help and work with the Business Council to, to help them with, with whatever it is that they're needing at the state level. So just so people know that there are other things out there that have been happening. And so it's just a matter of everybody coordinating. So I have big faith and optimism on this to really go forward and actually be extremely successful and put us on the map with, with all of our communities because they're hurting. And, and I think by this, this different buckets per se, I think they're going to hit a, a bunch of different aspects of the, of the community.
Okay. Next up question, Representative Furphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point out, I've had several conversations with Wyoming Bankers Association. They're very much interested in trying to get this money out to their customers and working with Wyoming Business Council. However, it is very important to them that we pass Chairman Greer's amendment and convert this to grants versus doing loans, which take a lot more effort and is a lot more complicated. So the bankers are certainly willing to help, but they really encourage us doing it with grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Representative Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only question is to, do any of nonprofits fit into this program whatsoever? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman Greer, if you'd take that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Representative Sweeney, the issue of specifically including nonprofits came before the committee and was voted down to, of having that language included. However, what, between LSO and the Business Council, is that door was still left open in the rulemaking process. And I'll just tell you, not all nonprofits are created equal. And, and they cause, and they cross a very, very broad section of purpose, you know, from educational to providing relief or an aid for the poor. And so with that issue being debated at length and having it specifically excluded from the bill, and I think maybe what, and maybe some of the other committee members can speak to, to their recollection of this and, and their, their thoughts, but it was simply a matter of the Business Council has followed a set of rules that does leave that door open for some. And I'll just, maybe I'll stop there and let some of the other committee members speak to their recollection of our discussion.
Okay. With that, Representative Summers.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And first of all, I want to thank Chairman Greer for his hard work on this bill and these issues. And, you know, I'd briefly touched on this with you, Chairman Greer, and, and that is the $500,000 limit on tranche three, which is kind of the reimbursement piece. And my concern was, you know, are we, are, are a few big firms going to eat up all that money? Or, or will it really get scattered out? So just a little bit of discussion on how you and your committee arrived at 500,000 versus 100,000 or any other number, just a little bit of discussion. Thank you.
Well, Mr., oh, sorry.
Chairman Greer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I mean, what I, what I can comment on that is in the, the initial draft that I put together for the committee to consider, the number was 100,000, but it was just a number. The committee discussed it. After we took testimony, we debated it and the committee decided that that number should be moved. It did two things. It moved the amount in the program up to $50 million for '25 and it moved that $100,000 cap up to a $500,000 cap. It was a, you know, a collaborative decision, joint decision of the committee. It wasn't, it wasn't my initial recommendations, but I respect my committee and their decision. And so that's how we did it. We used the process and that's the number we came up with.
All right. Next up, Representative Clem.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I have a question on going back to how all of these bills fit together, just kind of getting the whole picture here. So. So in the first bill that we looked at, we, we said on the, the effective date of this act that 450 million of this 1.25 billion is going to be made available. And as the good speaker just articulated a few moments ago, that 285 million of that 450 million is going toward businesses, which I, which I think is great. I guess the question that I have, and I don't know if it's, if it's addressed in this bill, right? So in the first bill, we specify that absent enactment of any further legislation that on July 15th, that another 400 million is going to be made available. And then on September 15th, remaining balance is going to be made available as well. And so my, my question really goes to the, the whole, the entirety of what we're doing. I understand in the short term, we're going to dedicate 285 million to the private sector. But if we, if we don't come back or we don't pass any further legislation, how, with the, with the 400 million that's going to be made available on July 15th and then the remaining balance in September 15th, do we have any idea how, how much money out of those pots are going to be able to go towards this business program? I, I guess that's my question because I don't see, all I see in the appropriation bill for this is just the, you know, the 50 million for one stipend program, the 50 million for another, and then 175 million for this loan program that hopefully will be made into a grant program. But that's all I see. And so I, I don't know if we need any further amendments to say that absent any, you know, additional legislation that on July 15th, another 285 million is made available to this program. You know, I, I don't know what the number is, but, but I, I guess that's what I'm looking for. Do we need to look ahead and, and have that kind of amendment? I'd appreciate the, the answer. Thank you.
Chairman Greer, do you want that now or do you want me to keep going?
No, I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not, I'm not all that bright, so one question at a time works for me. So I, I think to Representative Clem's point is that, one, we need to, because all the numbers that are in here are numbers. We, we, we got a few things tied back to the number of small businesses under 50 that are in the state. You know, we tried to work backwards on those, but none of them are exact. We don't know how many people are going to apply, just say for the first grant program. So that's why the 25% flex authority within this program is very good. I think we've got to come back and look at what that demand is and appropriate more we need to. However, the governor does have the right to be 11 into it, right? So that, that's that other side. And, you know, so you say, how do we know that we don't? I mean, that's why we're here today is because as legislators, House members in particular, closest to our people, we're here trying to at least put some parameters around what we're doing going forward. So this, this isn't perfect. It isn't absolute. What we are doing is saying, you know what, out of this first batch of money, this is how much we want to go back to our small businesses. Can we come in with an amendment? You know, can we craft, you know, it's probably, it's too late for a second reading amendment, but a third reading amendment saying, oh yeah, and by the way, if these, if these funds are exhausted, that another blank percent of this preparation needs to go in there? Hey, we might be able to do that. That's, you know, I mean, I'm open to any idea here. I'm not, I'm not shooting anybody down. I'm just saying, hey, this, look at the practical side of this. And this make damn sure we get this bill passed to help our small businesses.
Okay, Representative Speaker Hirschman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I think that was really good discussion by Chairman Greer and Representative Clem. And I think that is something to probably consider to make sure that that B11 authority extends to that. I think that, that would be worth looking, I think, for that third reading. I think we're all thinking that it does, but I think it would be good to make sure and tie the knot on that. I just want to quickly, Mr. Chairman and Chairman Greer and members that, just, just, this talk about loan and grant. And really, I think Chairman Greer, I just want to go back to what he said over and over and over again, really is about a non-recourse forgivable law. And, and I think we're going to be able to fix that. My concern obviously is the Constitution and it's Article 16, Section 6. You know, loan of credit donations prohibited. And, and I think we've got some amendments coming really for these bills to really propose some findings about that. It's an important piece of that. And so we're trying to work within the framework of our Constitution, make this as easy and as accessible to get that out. And I think we'll amend that to, it says grant, but I want folks to be aware of that. There'll be other amendments, I think, to make sure there's findings put in that. The legislature does recognize the Constitution and that it's, you know, that this section of the Constitution does matter 30 years from now, 40, 50 years from now. And so that was really my point. And Chairman Greer, appreciate you and your committee and all your work on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Brown, or Chairman Greer, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to let everybody know, I argue with everyone, Mr. Speaker. No exception. That we, we were very specific that the B11 process would apply to this bill. Now whether we carry that more and have a continuing appropriation, as maybe I think Representative Clem was suggesting, yeah, that's a whole nother deal. We did draft our findings because we did come out with two grant programs in the initial draft to try to accommodate the unique circumstances associated with this. But any, you know, as you say, Mr. Speaker, you're a genius, right? Any, any other findings that help us protect the integrity of our institution, our constitution, our state going forward are always welcome.
Now, Representative Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I want to take a, take a step back here and, and bring up a little bit more of the discussion surrounding the, the nonprofits. And I, I can say that I have received, just as well, I'm sure all of you have received numerous and numerous emails speaking about our nonprofits and the necessity that these nonprofits are looking for with these areas. And I've been attempting to, to try to listen to some of the discussion from our friends down the hall back and forth as well, to just kind of get an idea of what's going on here. And one of the things that I think that Chairman Greer brought up that is very important when it comes to these nonprofits is not all nonprofits are created equal. And so I think that the rulemaking authority is, is a good thing, but I, I am a little concerned about the interpretation of what we put into rulemaking if we give that authority. And that, that being the discussion about what is an advocacy group? And most of these advocacy groups who have an agenda, for instance, that may be antithetical to what you or I may believe, they could be applying for this. And I don't know that the executive branch is going to want to make the discussion or make the, the set determination of what qualifies as an advocacy group and what does not. And so I am a little concerned and I would be kind of interested to see if we can get some, some melding here of 59 other opinions on what, what we could do maybe to tighten this up in third reading, that we open this up to some nonprofits. But I am slightly concerned about just leaving this open to political pressure on the executive branch. And so if maybe we could get a little bit of discussion around that, I'd be, I'd be helpful for, for me to wrap my brain around this.
Representative Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to articulate my strong support for this bill, getting it passed and getting it out to work for the, for the people that are going to benefit from it, the people who've had to endure the adverse circumstances, you know, of the last few weeks. But, but more so, you know, what the rest of, you know, the year and, and other things going on in our state are going to curtail or entail. But going to the, the question of loan versus grant, I think what we have here is, is, is four pieces, maybe, maybe more of legislation, which when you step back and look at them, they, they come together in a really good way in terms of adding up to what we need right now for emergency response for what's happening in our state. And it sets us up, if you read it, it sets us up for other, other things to come down, down the road. I mean, we can come back, as some have said, but if we don't come back, we've got this set up so that it'll work. And I think the details are going to be set forward in the rule. And I think we, we need to be open minded to potential amendments, but not be over prescripting. For example, if you start specifying this nonprofit or that nonprofit or this profit or that profit, then I think you get into a whole different set of discussion that maybe we don't want right now, that will actually get in our way. And so I really think we want to keep it open. We want to make, make it work. All the pieces come together to work for us in the best way that we can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Representative Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to address some of the nonprofit testimony. I did actually bring a suggested amendment to change the verbiage because the concerns for all the nonprofits was individual owner. Those were the words, particularly in the bill that, that gave them a lot of heartache. After we sat there and we discussed it, our LSO, which I personally have to say, Minerals LSO is number one. We sit there and he dug in real deep and, and we actually went in and looked at, by definition, the clarification was that the nonprofits were covered through the Business Council's rules and regs through definition. We went pretty deep into that. One of the issues that we had from other testimony was these nonprofits that are, I can't remember the, the breakdown of them, but there are chambers of commerce, our people who do the convention, who advertise for conventions, who advertise for our, our local areas and things. Those were possibly, not possibly, one of those that actually fit. Now, the question came up, did they have COVID-related expenditures or harm? Personally, no. So that's up for debate from everybody else. But these nonprofits who are paying rent, these nonprofits who are paying food, these nonprofits who are, are, who are helping in that aspect, 100%. So I think that's where our debate was and ended is the fact that they were, they clearly qualified based on what the COVID expenditures were or that they were impacted. And then beyond that, that they fit the definition within the rules and regs already declared by the entity that's going to be setting this up so that we didn't need to get in, into the weeds and such of it. So that's where, that's how we ended up with that. So I've been getting inundated with a bunch of other nonprofits that were, that really, personally, when I looked at it, they, they aren't impacted, like the, the ones who are providing food and shelter and such. So that's, that's just a little back history.
Okay. Thank you, Representative Duncan. And then committee members, remember that this is really designed to ask any questions in case you want to have any amendments drafted and, or understand the bill better. And with that, we'll go to Representative Crick.
And I thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of points. A question was asked on the third tranche, how the $300,000 got there. And the testimony we heard during the Minerals Committee was some of our mines and larger companies, they're currently going through 200K or so a month. It was originally at 100, 100,000 and that money just isn't going to go far with some of these employers that have 5, 600 employees. They have people now working from home, people getting their temperature taken as they come in. It just wasn't going to be enough and the 300,000 was kind of put out there to, you know, try to get somewhere going into this. I think if you look at the numbers, there won't be too many folks set up. So I think we ended up at 500. It was just to make sure that we could have them go for a couple of months. Another point kind of not related to that was, and what I've been telling folks that I've talked to about this bill anyway, is it's going to end up being, as I see it, kind of like PPP. Let your folks know what's happening and they need to pay attention because I don't think we're going to have enough money in any of these tranches when we're done. And if you don't get lined up and know what's going to happen ahead of time, you'll be left out. So I hope that helps answer the one on the, send in your receipts and we'll help pay for your expenses. And then, yeah, folks are going to need to know what's happening or we getting criticized on the other end. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Greer.
My committee members are doing great. I'm just listening and enjoying. Thank you.
You're welcome. Representative Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to respond to the speaker's comment about constitutional prohibitions. And I think there's another avenue for us to consider, and that is under the takings clause, under the, the eminent domain provisions in Article 1 of our Constitution, that when the government takes or damages private property, the private property owner is entitled to do compensation from the state. And I think if we look at this as a regulatory taking, we may find an avenue that allows us to fund some of these things that we might otherwise think we are prohibited from funding.
Chairman Greer.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Representative Washington, if you, if you read through the findings, you will, you will find that implication. I think it would be a bit dangerous for the legislature to, to make a, a direct ruling or determination of that at this juncture. But, yeah, and, and I think that's the thing, the unique nature of this health emergency. And, and because our state constitution requires us to, to protect the health of our citizens, these orders came forth under existing legislation that quite frankly was back there probably to protect us during a smallpox outbreak or cholera, a completely different situation. But, you know, we're, we're put in place to protect the, the health and safety of our citizens and impacted a bunch of our citizens. And I, I think there's a nice, there's a nice path to walk down there and still preserve our constitutional integrity. But we, we do want to be a bit careful on, on how we say that.
Thank you. Representative Berlin-Game.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a note, I want to say that I think it's fully appropriate that we do this, you know, first things first, but that we also have an eye on what's headed down the pike for us. And when we think about the role of nonprofits in our community and whether or not they survive through this, that we are going to have to be cutting a lot of state spending in our next session. There are a lot of agencies who are going to have drastically reduced, you know, spending. And that's the role that a lot of nonprofits take on in our community. And so I would just urge everyone to, to keep that nonprofit language and understanding of them receiving these monies as well.
Thank you. Representative Klassen.
Yeah, just a quick question. What was the conversation? Is this applies to publicly traded companies versus locally owned companies? I just want to make certain we're not sending dollars to national, international investors that we're focusing this on Wyoming businesses that can use these funds.
Chairman Greer.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Representative Klassen, great question. And in the first two programs, you will see that those are Wyoming owned businesses. That's part of the requirements in both of those. Now, the, the third provision regarding the PPE, I call that the, the PPE provision or stipends, there is not that language. And, and, and we know that because as our, our larger employers who did stay open incurred those expenses, mines, grocery stores, those, some of those are publicly owned or owned by people out of state, out of country, quite frankly. But on the first two grant programs that are directed at our small businesses, we have that in, again, standard Wyoming Business Council language regarding that they are independently owned and operated headquartered in Wyoming as their principal operation located in Wyoming. So we are, we are targeting Wyoming businesses.
Thank you, Chairman Greer. At this time, is there any further discussion on House Bill 1004? Seeing none and question being called, you've heard the motion on a House Bill 1004. The motion is when the committee of the whole rise reported do so with the recommendation that 1004 passed committed the whole, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And again, please keep them raised for those following on YouTube. All right, all of those opposed, please raise your hand. House Bill 1004 is passed committed the whole. Representative Lindholm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got some motions to make and it's going to, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman Lindholm, it's my understanding that the majority floor leader might make a motion before your motions.
Okay.
If the majority floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Chairman, I will give a little prelude to this motion. There will be some motions as we come back from lunch. I think the movements would probably benefit from some time to talk to their colleagues about what they are attempting to proceed with. So, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'm going to move that the House stand in recess until 1:30 PM. Thank you.
You've heard the motion. All in favor of the motion recess, please raise your hand.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Chairman, after further consideration, and I actually looked at the clock, let's make that 2:00 PM. Mr. Chairman, my apologies.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. That looks like a clear majority. Motion is passed. We will recess until 2:00 PM. Please remember to turn off your microphones and video screens.